All right, we'll call the City Council regular meeting agenda for Monday, June the 24th, 2024 at 6:30 PM to order. If you would all rise, we will be led in an invocation by Councilmember Cade, followed by our pledges by Councilmember Chavaria.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we humbly come to you tonight, asking for safety for all of the members of council, city staff, and the residents in this building. Thank you for all the residents that are here tonight. It's nice to see a good crowd. We thank you for our first responders, our fire and police, and our safe city. Also, Lord, please give the council members wisdom and guidance as we deliberate on the items before us. May every decision be made for the best of the city and for your glory. We humbly pray in your precious name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice pro. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, thank you for that. And as Ms. Cade said, welcome to City Hall. This is your City Hall, and it's your opportunity to be a part of your government as you all gather here today. So we have a great-looking crowd, and I appreciate each and every one of you for being out. We'll move forward in our agenda. Roll call and certification of coral, Madam Secretary, I'll certify that we have a coral present as all members of the council are present. Before we go to citizens' comments, Member Byrom asked for a point of personal privilege, so I'll turn the mic over to him real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As some of you may know, and some of you may not know, there was an article released here a little over two weeks ago, June 13th, and it was indicating that Pearland was listed as the seventh safest city in the state. And I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that because that's a big deal. I think that's hugely important, and that is a direct reflection of the people sitting on the left side of the room. So I wanted to say thank you to our city staff. Thank you to our police department, our fire department. Y'all are the reason I have two teenage daughters. I told an officer this at the post office a few weeks ago, a few months ago now, actually. Y'all are the reason that I feel safe letting my daughters go about the city and enjoy the life and the community they get raised in. This recognizes your efforts, and I just want to take a moment to say thank you to each and every one of you for what you do to make Pearland the city that we all know and love. Thank you all.
Very good, very good. Appreciate that, Councilmember Byrom. And I think the whole council echoes those sentiments. It was great to be recognized in that article the way we were. With that, we'll move to citizens' comments. We have several people who have signed up to speak, some specific action item. And if you ask to speak on those items, we will call your name when we get to those particular items. The others are either general comments, or they're not attached to a specific agenda item. When we call your name, Mayor Protim will list your name. You'll go to the podium, give your name and address for the record, so we can match back your comments to your registration card. You'll have three minutes to speak. The screens will show a countdown clock. I want to remind you that as council, if it's an item that's not on the agenda, we can't dialogue with you. But if it's an issue that can bring to our attention, we can also certainly point you to one of our staff members, who we can make and establish a contact tonight and hopefully resolve some of your issues. So with that, Mayor Protim will start those listing names. All right, thank you, Mayor. In the order I've received, and first up, Dane Bieto. Thank you, sir. If you go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, and thank you for being here. And I am sure we will butcher a name or three tonight, so.
My name is Dane Beto. I live at 5710 Cottonwood Street here in Pearland. Here tonight, I've got some, trying to figure out what's going on with the fireworks situation and the laws in the city. Fireworks are illegal, yet we have fireworks stands popped up in Walmart parking lot. According to some of the ordinances that I'm able to find and locate, there's not supposed to be any fireworks stands within 5,000 feet of city lines. You can contact the Pearland Police Department, and their response from their dispatcher is we don't address firework calls. I'd just like to know why the City of Pearland Police Department is not enforcing these ordinances. I did pull the Information Act and pulled the records for the city police department. In 2023, July 4th, and New Year's Eve, there were no citations written, no confiscations. You only have five fire marshals to deal with a city of 120,000-plus people. That's kind of ridiculous. There's got to be something done to curb this. Thank you.
Dane, before we move on, Assistant Chief Randall, as well as our chief over here, if y'all don't mind having a conversation with Dane about that, and making sure that understand that state law overrides any of our ordinances, that's where most of this is going to come down. So we welcome you to address that with your state legislature when the time comes as well. Thanks for those comments. Next up, Mr. Jimmy Davis. Thanks for being here. Name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combsell Street. Counsel, two weeks ago, I came up to y'all talking about my meter and the wonderful AMI system and all the data irregularities. I want to thank staff. The very next day, city was out there looking into the problem. The day after that, they determined my endpoint was the problem. They replaced it. Since then, no more data unavailable. So that's great. The system's working like it's supposed to. I asked kind of what happened. How did my endpoint, which supposedly worked great for months, leading up to AMI going live, and then a few days after that, it started malfunctioning? I was told it was a CGR endpoint, and it just wasn't the best for the area. Now, how it worked fine for months before, nobody knows. But it's changed out. It's fixed. I appreciate Mr. Hardy. Mr. Hardy has stepped in, and the absence of Ms. Massey, he was great in communicating information, being transparent, giving explanations, explaining irregularities that I saw, and he broke it out well and explained it perfectly. So I understood, okay, that's why I'm seeing two different numbers and why things didn't seem to match up. It's perfectly logical. So great job on communicating there, Mr. Hardy. One question I did ask, though, that seems to be maybe council needs to look and figure out at a higher level. My meter malfunctioned for almost a month, a third of the time, and it was never caught. The city receives the data. It goes through its iterations, calculations, transfers to a new portal that says, yeah, your data's not available for this hour. How was this not detected until I brought it to y'all's attention? How many others is this happening to? How many endpoints are not communicating properly? Couple hundred? A few thousand? Does anybody know? Hopefully, staff will figure out a process, but within that system, there needs to be a way, something that says, when the data pulls in and it's not available, that the system, the software should say, hey, data's not available. You got a problem. Let's figure it out. And just how widespread is this problem? I think those are questions that should get answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, next up, Ella Mona Farira. Like I said, we're probably going to butcher a name or two. Apologize for that. Thank you for being here. If you'd give us the correct pronunciation of your name and your address, I'd appreciate it.
My name is Inha Muna Farira, and I live at 2009 Plum Grove Lane. I am a first-generation Palestinian America, and I'll be a first-time voter in these upcoming elections. America was founded on the values of freedom and equality, and yet it seems like this only applies to a select few. As the escalation of the genocide in Gaza nears its anniversary, mass killings of Palestinian civilians by Israeli forces continues unchecked. Israel has claimed the lives of close to 40,000 Palestinian civilians, mostly children and women, and the toll is rising daily. It is time to say enough is enough, and a full ceasefire should be implemented. The U.S. foreign policy should be reflective of our values as enumerated in the U.S. Constitution by the founding fathers, in support of the Palestinian people and the end of their occupation. The continued inhumane oppression of the Palestinian people is intolerable. As I speak, Palestinian civilians are being massacred, starved, and are lying dead under the rubble, murdered at the hands of the Israeli occupational forces. Since 1948, America has sent hundreds of billions of dollars to Israel with an endless supply of the most advanced American weapons, in addition to logistics and intelligence assistance. Texas itself has invested one-hundreds of millions of dollars of taxpayer money in Israel's bonds. Since 1994, while increasing numbers of Texans are struggling with basic health care and housing needs and skyrocketing homelessness. Living as a Palestinian in the Houston area, I've noticed a concerning pattern in these past couple of months. It seems like the very act of being Palestinian is being weaponized and politicized, when in public or at school, people seem to be either angered, threatened, or scared by my presence. I've had incidents when going out in public of people staring me down and making angry gestures at me. My Palestinian friends and relatives have noticed the same. I've had friends been accused of promoting terrorism by adults for simply wearing the kaffiyah. But all of this is minor in comparison to the rise of anti-Palestinian hate in America. On October 14, six-year-old Wadiya Al Fayyum was murdered by his landlord, and his mother, Hanan Shaheen, was stabbed over a dozen times while the landlord screamed anti-Palestinian and Islamophobic remarks. This is also accompanied by, in Austin, Texas, recently, a Palestinian man was stabbed at a protest in Austin. The rise of violence around the world makes an immediate ceasefire imperative. Dozens of cities all over America have already issued resolutions for a call for a ceasefire in Gaza, and I believe Pearland should do the same. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments. Next up, Hassan El Basi. Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. If you'd give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Hassan El Basi. I'm a resident at 4943 Carrington Court. I've been a resident of Pearland for the past three years, very proud resident of this city. I'm just echoing over the lady who was speaking over here. I'm particularly impacted personally because my parents, they do live and reside in Gaza Strip as we speak. So they are living in tents that we normally do go in camping trips for fun, but it's not fun for them. It's a way of life. So they deal with that on a daily basis. We are impacted here. My kids are asking me when I'm going to be able to see my grandparents again. So that is very hard. My kids are born American Palestinians, second generation. They can't see the grandkids. So that is really tough to speak to them and try to explain to them the reasons why. As taxpayers, I do see the need for us to revise our own mindset on how we spend our taxpayers' money. We do have a lot of local issues that the money can go and be well spent at. It does financially impact me because I have to find ways on how to get them to have some money so they can buy food, which is very scary over there right now. Not even clean water, no sanitation, no medical assistance, and most of the hospitals are out of service. Can you imagine having your kids, like you say, we're in a safe city of Pearland, that we don't have that safety for kids? The slaughter of children is inspeakable. It's out of touch with reality. It has nothing to do with solving a problem. It is very important to understand, this is not a Palestinian issue. This is a humanitarian issue. And we need to look beyond the boundaries and the lines of, you know, borders. This is a humanity. We, as Americans, we always stood for justice, liberty, and able to provide humanitarian aid with no conditions. So this is where we failed as a state, and I would like us to see that change in our mindset as people. Now, regardless where we're from, I would like to see Gaza City as safe as Pearland. That's really my hope. So my kids can one day go visit their grandparents' home and be safe there as well. That's all I have to say. I do enjoy living in Pearland. It's a great city to be at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments, sir. Next up, Rania Khalifa. Okay, I'll call her. She will only get three minutes. Thank you for being here. Next up, Dinah Dina Abdallah. We actually go in the order in which they come in, yeah. We take them in the order they're turned in. That way, we keep it. So I've got Dinah Abdallah up next. No, ma'am. I've got to have a registration card filled out. We assign three minutes, and if we group them together, we'll give one person five minutes. That's how we normally do it. That's how we normally do it, so. All right, so Dinah. Thank you for being here. If you give us your name and address for the purpose of the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Dina. I live at 2817 Lost Maples Drive. A friend of mine was talking to their neighbor about the 14,000 children who have died under the rubble, or the millions who have evacuated their homes, or the children who have lived with disability caused by this war. You know what his neighbor said? He said war is hell. He continued to justify what is happening in Palestine. War is hell, yes, but in the battlefield. A Palestinian child is not a soldier. A pregnant woman is not a soldier. Their elderly are not soldiers. Their homes are not battlefields. Use of starvation of children is not war, and is considered a war crime. These images pierce my mind and soul daily for the past eighteen months, eight months. So we have established that there is some rules that apply in war because we sit safely with no worries when our country, America, has been in a bunch. Just imagine, people that share a common last name, like Jackson, and that common Jackson family was wiped out. That is the Palestinian story. Complete lineages have been wiped out. Remember those Christmas pictures where the family gathers to take pictures, and it's like 20 families, 20 people of all ages in one picture? Palestinians here in America carry pictures like these, in which single members in the picture, in which every single member in the picture has a horrific story for their murder under the occupation, whether the littlest one was burnt alive or the other stuck under the rubble. When will we wake up and see how complicit we are in this genocide? Around the world, Amnesty International called this apartheid. The International Court of Justice issued concern for a genocide. International Criminal Court has filed warrants for arrest before the pre-trial chamber for Netanyahu. Every tax dollar spent to Israel genocide is un-American. As a city, we have a responsibility to our community. Your constituents are hurting. Some have seen unthinkable things. Some have lost family members. We are hurting and urge you to submit a ceasefire resolution in hope that we see a brighter future for our country. Also, faith has taught us to keep our money clean so that we see blessings in our daily life. Please divest from any Israeli support and place that money where it needs to be, here locally. This is America. We are not colonized by Israel. These boycott rules need to go. Why do we have to have such restrictions on our purchase freedom? Last thing on my mind was how dear to my heart freedom of speech is. Condemned what Sugar Land City Council has done by not allowing its citizens to speak about Palestine any longer. Our freedoms are being shaken when my friend lost her job for calling this war the truth, a genocide. Our Pearland City Council can be a beacon of light. Join your fellow city councils around the U.S. that have called for a ceasefire. These green checks, and I'll put it up for you, these green checks are all the city councils around the U.S. that have called for a ceasefire. It is too many to count. Polls show 70% of U.S. citizens want a ceasefire. Please pass a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, thank you for those comments. Next up, Nada Mansour. Okay, it's, if they're signed up, they'll have three minutes.
Thank you.
No comments, ma'am? Uh, next up, Ellison Sholkoff. Thank you for being here. If you give us your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Ellison Sholkoff. I live at 3335 Worthington Drive. Good evening. I come before you as a concerned Pearland resident. I'm 19 years old, a Dawson High School graduate, and a student at Sand Jack College. I'm sure most of you have heard of the popular app Nextdoor. It's a commonly, it's a community forum where members can, members of different neighborhoods can post. Within the past few years, particularly since COVID, there has been an influx of posts asking for financial assistance. There's been a variety of people with a variety of reasons, from medical bills to layoffs to disabilities. I've noticed these posts tend to heavily divide the community members, with some saying they'd love to donate, and others suggesting they get a job and stop asking for handouts. It raises an interesting point. Is it the people's responsibility to love thy neighbor, or should those in need pull themselves up by their bootstraps and work their way out of poverty? I, however, present to you all a third option. Rather than investing in the apartheid state of Israel, Pearland could invest in its citizens. As I speak, children lie dead under the rubble of their homes. Children waking up only to find their family members and friends have been slaughtered by oppressive, by the oppressive Israeli regime. This genocide is currently being funded by our tax dollars, a sickening fact that many have grown far too comfortable with. The U.S. has given over $250 billion to Israel. I want to talk more about Pearland, though. Many will try to ignore the poverty in our own backyards, opting to pretend as though unhoused folks only exist in Houston. But we know the fact of the matter is that wealth inequalities do affect those in our community. Pearland government officials may try and distract us from the fact, but we, as informed citizens, know the truth that oppression of one is oppression of all. Our issues are interconnected. This is because settler colonialism, a term many of you haven't heard since your last high school history course, is a serious threat to society as we know it. White supremacy rooted in principles of white power and nationalism continue to divide our country into factions. The dangerous ideology has the potential to continue to divide us further. I personally believe in the good in humanity. I believe the government officials and citizens alike know that the slaughter of Palestinian people is inherently evil and must come to an end. So I encourage you all to show your humanity. Sign our ceasefire resolution and free Palestine.
All right, thank you. Thank you for those comments. Next up, Hannah Al Gibson. Thank you for being here. If you give us your name and address for the purpose of the record.
Hello, my name is Hannah Al Gibson, and I live at 3342 Worthington Drive. I'm a Dawson graduate and a lifelong Pearland resident. But today, I come to you not as one of your constituents, but as a daughter, a university student, and a child of your Commonwealth. The youth of your community are not just your future voter base and taxpayers. We are your future, and I urge you to not ignore our voices any longer. There is an incredible disconnect between the way that we discuss the merits of the younger generations and the way that we actually treat them. We all know that the children are our future. We claim to cherish them, protect them, to value their lives and the hope that they bring us. Everything we do today, we do for those that will come after us. And yet, we don't bat an eye as more than 15,000 children have been murdered and more than 17,000 children have been orphaned by the IOF. We cheer as the police deploy tear gas and military-grade weapons and strategies against peaceful college protesters. We laugh in the face of the bravery that these young adults show instead of applauding their determination. These issues don't just exist in a distant country far outside of our sights, minds, and hearts. 15,000 children dead anywhere is 15,000 children dead everywhere. Officials around the globe, including here in Texas, have enacted dystopian-like measures not unlike those used to dehumanize entire populations worldwide. In Sugar Land, city officials have restricted the free speech of their constituents, even going so far as to deny a hijabi woman her right to speak at their city council meetings for discussing a non-agenda item. My friends in Austin and Houston, among with many other cities, have sent me videos showing the state police throwing tear gas into crowds of peaceful protesters, trampling students with horses, pushing them into oncoming traffic, pulling bystanders out of the crowd and tackling them onto the ground, tasing them, beating them, and more. Your children are watching you, and we are horrified by the ignorance and stagnation displayed by this body. To say that the youth of Pearland, of Texas, of the world are disillusioned by the corruption and the blatant disregard for human life would be a gross understatement. Every day, the younger generation makes up more and more of your voter base, and we will not forget who stood by as we were demonized, belittled, ignored, and threatened. Our outrage will not disappear if you close your eyes for long enough, and we will only get louder to compensate for your silence. Will you be remembered by your grandchildren as heroes, those brave enough to put their faith into new perspectives and generational growth? Or will your name be written in history next to the people we despise most, who refuse to change with the rising tide and were too afraid to step outside of the status quo? We are writing a final draft of our ceasefire resolution. All you have to do is sign it. Please do not forget about your younger constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for those comments. Next up, Mansour Abdul Rahman. Okay, Dina's already had her three minutes, so you're more than welcome to speak for your time. Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here. Uh, last one I have is Salmina Tarek. This was turned in late, but if you're okay.
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah, absolutely. They're here. We want to hear from them.
Thank you for being here. If you give us your name and address for the purposes of the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Salmina Tarek. Uh, my address is 2209 Shore Creek Drive, Pearland, Texas, 77584. Um, good evening and thank you for giving me your time. I have been a Pearland resident for nearly two decades now. Over the years, I've witnessed our community grow from the construction of my family's marble slab that is now passed on to another family, to the establishment of the Pearland mosque and the development of the Shadow Creek, um, Shadow Creek community. Pearland holds a special place in my heart as the final resting place of my grandparents. However, tonight I stand before you as a concerned parent and a daughter of aging Pearland residents. For far too long, the United States has prioritized foreign aid over the needs of its citizens. Consider the billions of dollars allocated to support Israel since 1948, while essential programs like Social Security, the Affordable Care Act, Medicaid, and other children's health insurance programs face cuts in trillions of dollars. These programs are lifelines for low-income families, seniors, and people with disabilities. Here in Texas, the decision not to expand Medicaid under the Affordable Care Act left half a million Texans without coverage in 2023 due to bureaucratic hurdles. Now amidst rising inflation and job losses due to automation, many Pearland residents are struggling. What was once a hopeful community is now facing increasing challenges. Families like my in-laws are grappling with soaring rent and food prices while their social security benefits fail to keep pace. Our schools are also feeling the strength. Texas school districts have been underfunded and facing teacher shortages, continue to make difficult budget cuts in the millions. Meanwhile, the Texas Comptroller Glenn Hager vowed to purchase $45 million in Israel bonds continuing to provide liquidity to Israel. This neglect exacerbates issues like teacher shortages and cuts to special education, leaving schools ill-equipped to support our children's needs. As a parent, I worry about my child's education and safety every day. Our schools lack necessary resources from adequate staffing to mental health support. When will our elected officials prioritize funding for our schools and essential federal programs that support our most valuable residents? Instead of spending taxpayer dollars on foreign conflicts, when will we see real actions to address these pressing issues? We, your constituents, are hurting. We urge you, as our voices in government, to demand increased funding for our schools and critical federal programs that assist low-income families, seniors, and individuals with disabilities instead of supporting a genocide. It's time to prioritize our community's needs over foreign engagements. It's time for action. Consider passing a ceasefire resolution to reclaim taxpayer dollars for America. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Thank you for being here. Mayor, that's all the registration cards I have.
Okay, awesome. Thank you all for your comments tonight. Thank you for coming and sharing those with us. Again, we can't dialogue on something that is not a topic on our, unless it's a topic on our agenda under the Texas Open Meetings Act. So we do appreciate you. We do hear you. And your city council, other than a resolution, the other, the other issues you're talking about are something that are simply outside. We don't control the federal government's budget. We don't control the state budget. We don't control any of those types of things. And so we, we stand with you on many of the issues that you talked about, especially school funding and those types of things, Medicaid funding, and certainly bringing aid to our people. So we appreciate each and every one of you coming tonight. And we will see if there's an appetite later for the council to put a resolution up for us to discuss. With that, we'll move forward to consent agenda. Were there any items to be pulled on the consent agenda?
Item E.
E? All right. Mr. Coza, if you'd present consent agenda items A through F with the exception of D and E.
Certainly, Mayor. Consideration and possible action consent agenda items A through F, the exception of D and E. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. With that, we'll go straight to matters removed from the consent agenda. Uh, Mr. Coza, if you'd present, go ahead and present D, and then behind that, we'll present E.
Certainly, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R2024-120. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to purchase replacement switches for our IT department. We have fifty-six switches currently. This will, uh, that are on the end-of-life announcements from the manufacturers. That means the manufacturers no longer support those switches, making them vulnerable. Um, we, this request is a budgeted request to replace twenty-five of those this year, and we'll have the balance of those replaced next year. Um, so these are necessary for our overall IT infrastructure and our network that all of our city departments rely upon. Um, so we're going through the state contract DIR to purchase these, and we recommend approval in the amount of $373,862. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I did talk to Dan earlier today, so he did explain while Dan is here. Dan, I pulled this budget or this line item, Mayor, just because the explanation was kind of hard to understand. And if Dan is here, Dan, I hope you don't mind, but if you can kind of go in details. Um, one of the conversation we had was if there is an alternative, but you were explaining to me how Cisco is probably the best option we have and why we should continue to purchase Cisco.
Uh, sure. Um, so just to take a step back, these are on the end-of-life from a Cisco perspective. Uh, they have announced that these are end-of-life. It was part of our five-year strategic plan. Uh, it was also included originally in the long-term IT assessment that we do, right? So we plan out when network infrastructure needs to be replaced. Um, talking about the actual Cisco product line itself, um, really it's, um, has to do with security and visibility into the infrastructure. Uh, so we take a layered security approach when it comes to vulnerabilities and obviously cyber attacks. Um, Cisco has a full suite of software applications that are layered in. Uh, this switching line, the newest one that we're asking for, um, basically gives us a single pane of glass to be able to measure the security and also the performance of the network infrastructure. So that's one aspect. The other aspect is, um, new requirements coming out from a power perspective, right? New cameras, new phones, uh, like desk phones. Um, new wireless access points all require, uh, higher-end, uh, power requirements. So, uh, these new switches will handle any of the new equipment that we put into production and bring on, uh, with new facilities and such. So like the surface water plant, for example, has, um, uh, cameras in and around the facility. Those are powered directly by the switch. Uh, new lighting requirements as well. Our power over ethernet is what it's called. Uh, basically, it's low voltage lighting, um, that doesn't require an electrician to put in. Um, it's simply run over the network. Um, but it really boils down to end-of-life and the security aspect and mitigating risks to the organization.
Question asked and answered? That's a good, uh, good explanation, Dan. Any other questions, comments, Mr. Coza?
Oh, I thought you were reaching for a question. All right. Quick, quick follow-up. Um, so in our new construction, we're using the POE lighting?
Uh, so we do have it at surface water plant, and we also have it at the EPW admin building. Yes.
So new stuff. I've, I've looked at the cost. It doesn't, the numbers don't work from a business standpoint. I'd, um...
Small business, no. I'd say city facility, uh, it depends on where you're going to install them. Um, if you look at, uh, how power over ethernet works, it's very reliable, doesn't require, well, they will stay active regardless of a power outage, right? Because usually we're on UPS batteries and we're also on generator, uh, which the network has to sustain. Um, lighting sometimes, depending on the facility, like City Hall, for example, um, is not on generator when it comes to lighting, so you lose all that capability. Um, so it depends on the use case.
Okay. Um, yeah, I guess I'm going to be asking more about when we use it and when we don't because it's expensive. It's slick. I, I'd love it, but we're spending taxpayers' dollars here and, um, and LED bulbs work. Um, and they're a hell of a lot cheaper. Um, anyway, thank you for answering the question.
All right. Any other questions? Follow-up? Saying none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Mr. Coza, if you'd present E, please.
Certainly. Uh, consideration and possible action, resolution number R2024-115. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment to our existing contract with TD Industries. They provide our preventative maintenance and repairs for HVAC systems and ice machines across the city. Um, the amendment is necessary for some ongoing necessary repairs at multiple facilities, including the West Pearland Library, Fire Station Eight, Fire Station Three, Melvin Knapp Activity Center, the Reflection Bay Wastewater Treatment Plant, and the IT closet at Fire Administration. We got, uh, we've basically run out the extent of our contract, uh, that we've approved thus far this year. And this, uh, additional amount of $56,000 will help us get through the end of the year and take care of these outstanding items.
Yeah, I pulled it, Mayor. Um, thank you for that. And I know there was an email that was sent out, but can you speak specifically to, I guess, Station Eight and the West Pearland Library? I mean, those still smell new and were...
Sure. So, you know, at the West Pearland Library, there is a, um, a board on one of the units, the rooftop units, um, a control board that has gone out. Um, so that particular part of the system is not under warranty and has to be replaced so that we can continue to control that. And then, uh, Fire Station Eight, I don't know if anybody has, if Lorenzo, or maybe if I did see Jack here, if you could step up and let us know what the Fire Station Eight repairs are.
Jack, Pridge, one of you guys in the room that may be able to answer that?
Uh, yes, sir. Apologize here. Let me, uh, look at my notes. I have so many ongoing repairs that, uh... So, yes, sir. There may have been a mistake on the agenda. There is no pending repairs on Station Eight. It may have been Fire Station Three, which was a mini-split in one of the electrical units that need to be, electrical IT closets that need to be replaced, uh, very similar to the Fire Admin.
All right. Thank you for that. And, um, yeah, just with those two new builds up, and I know there was an email that went out, but just for the public to see that.
Sure. And it's, you know, it's repairs as they're necessary on items that are outside of warranty, so...
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, one second. Uh, you said it's Fire Station Three? So didn't we just approve last meeting all that money to repair everything on Fire Station Three? Am I, was I wrong? Two and three. Two and three. So was that not covered already? I thought we were rehauling Fire Station Three, it looks like.
So did that not include that mini-split system, what we...
No, sir, it didn't.
Too many people talking. Hang on a second.
So the repairs we recently approved for Fire Stations Two and Three, that was for the main systems for the entire building. Um, this is apparently for a mini-split that serves some specific portion of the building. That's not part of the overall system that we're doing the repairs to.
Any other questions? Mr. Cade? It's a misprint. Any other questions? Saying none. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Oh.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
All right. With that, we'll move to public hearing number one. Uh, Martin, if you'll read into the record the reason and move right into your staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so first public hearing, uh, this is a request by Stephen Ritchie, Suba Consulting Incorporated applicant on behalf of American Modern Green Development Houston LLC, owner for approval of amendments to the Ivy District Plan Development on approximately 6.198 acres of land. Uh, this is generally located at the southeast corner of Spectrum Boulevard and Ivy Park Terrace. Uh, so as mentioned, uh, this is making amendments to the existing Ivy District Plan Development. Uh, this is all located within the Lower Kirby Urban Center for the future land use category. Uh, and through our communications with the public, we've not received any comments in either support or opposition of this case. Uh, here you can see a general outline of the entirety of the plan development. And then outlined in particular is the area where the amendments are taking place. Uh, and then you can see the future land use is generally all for Lower Kirby Urban Center for the entirety of the development. Uh, taking a look at the specific, uh, area, you can see multifamily that is under construction uh, to the west, uh, some undeveloped property to the north, undeveloped property that's planned for an office to the east, and then, uh, park and detention pond uh, with the Ivy Park to the south, and then a townhome development that is in design just to the southwest. Uh, so this property was annexed in the city in 1999 and went through, uh, getting the Modern Green Ivy Plan Development in 2014. Uh, then in 2016, uh, the zoning of the property was approved for a change uh, that made some amendments to the Ivy District, uh, particularly on Track Two, which was for the condo continuing care retirement community, the CCRC. Uh, and while that project is using similar materials, infinestration and aesthetics as the multifamily project on Track One, uh, they were two different uses of the land. So the subject property was plotted in 2019 as Track Two within the final plat of the Modern Green Ivy District. Uh, and currently, uh, it is the subject property, that middle Track Two, is undeveloped, uh, but the utility, infrastructure, and roadways within the plan development are constructed. Uh, so here you can see that Track Two that is looking at being developed for the multifamily uh, is currently being utilized as the lay-down facility for construction of Track One. Here you can get a little better view. This is looking west, uh, with the multifamily development, uh, at the far end of the screen, and then the subject track, uh, Track Two, uh, there in the middle. Uh, so this is, again, from the original plan development. Uh, it had the continuing care retirement community, uh, there in the middle, uh, with 366 units. Uh, and then there was retail space provided along Ivy Park Terrace, which is that middle road in between the two sets of units. Uh, I did change the screen. This is a very similar drawing, though. Uh, so what is proposed, uh, basically mirrors the initial Track One over to Track Two. Uh, the, uh, the amendment would allow for a four-story multifamily, uh, building with amenities and a parking... parking garage, 359 units, and it would maintain that retail space along Ivy Park Terrace. This is a general layout of the number of units and the square footage for those units, again totaling out to 359 proposed units. This is the elevations that they are proposing, again, it's very similar, if not the same, as what exists on Track One. So, staff finds that the proposed amendment is consistent with the approval criteria, the proposed amendment is consistent with the future land use plan, and also with the future place type for the upcoming comprehensive plan. With that, staff recommends approval of the amendment to the Ivy District Plan Development. Staff took this to the Planning and Zoning Commission, as you can see, there were a variety of concerns and questions about the development, about the timeline for leasing, about the standards of the development, and ensuring that it was of similar quality and nature as what exists on Track One. With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to one to approve the amendment to the Ivy District Plan Development, and that one outlier vote, I believe, was about the land ownership, as the CCRC was a condominium product which allows for some individual ownership of the building rather than just a multifamily where you are leasing from one owner. With that, though, Mayor, I'll pass back to you with a positive recommendation.
All right, thank you for that. Is the applicant present? You have a, do you have a presentation to go along with this, or just here to answer questions? Okay. Okay. Well, when we get to the question and answer period after we go through the actual public hearing, if we have questions, which we very well may, we'll call on you at that time. Is that fair? All right, good, good, good to see you all tonight. With that, we'll move forward in our public hearing. Those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request, go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Second attempt, for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request, or in final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll turn it over to City Council for questions, comments, and concerns.
Yes, if I could ask you guys a question real quick.
When you do, please give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name's DJ Blanchard with Suba USA Corporation, we're at 1800 West Loop South in Houston.
My name is Stephen Ritchie with Suba Consulting, and live and operated out of 8235 El Rio, Houston, Texas.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate y'all being here. In my agenda packet, it is page 62, oh, you've got it right in front of me, you read my mind, thank you, sir. This was mentioned at planning and zoning, so it's more a matter of letting the general public understand the scope of what's happening here. There was a concern raised, and I think it was an appropriate concern, that Track Three, which would be in this drawing, correct me if I'm right, the retail space on the corner towards the freeway, that there would be a later initiative to come before planning and zoning and eventually council to change that from retail space to multifamily as well, and so there was a concern at the planning and zoning stage of whether that was in your plan or not, so could you guys speak to that for the general public to understand? And also, can you, well, I'll get to that in a minute, go ahead with that one.
We represent the owner and this PD, and not necessarily their desire for whatever might be in the future for that piece of property, it's probably more valuable as an office spot since it's adjacent to 288, that's not, that's not even on the radar for us right at the moment.
Okay, great. I just, I just wanted to make sure people understood that, because I thought it was an appropriate question from planning and zoning, because we tend to see that recently, properties being purchased and then asked to change to something else so they can build that, so protecting that, I think, would be important. Also, under the original plan development agreement, this was going to be a very, very similar structure to what you guys are proposing now, you're essentially asking to change who can live there versus the original plan development agreement, you're not changing floor plan, anything like that, this is what was, this is gonna get built either way.
That's right, the physical structure is, was always planned to be this, the previous, which was a condominium and assisted living facility with the same approximate number of units, I believe the first one was 366 versus this of 359. There's no physical change, it's just the residents within it will no longer be part owner occupier, part assisted living facility. This would just be a typical multifamily development like the first phase.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to get that clarification from you, I appreciate it.
One of the issues that the owner has faced since developing this property is, they have researched all, almost all of the CCRC operators in the, in the states, and have come up blank because no one was able to put together a development agreement for development for the entire site. Plus, everything with interest rates going up, they've had a very difficult time doing this, so that's where we are with this at this point.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you for coming. You know, we have a project behind HEB.
My council may be aware of it.
Was gonna be a senior center. When I read your package, sir, I'll tell you, I'm not gonna be in favor of this, which I like the idea of the senior center being there. I think, in my mind, I think you guys never intended to build that senior center, or senior center, or a living center, and I think you guys just wanna flip it to have more apartments. So, I would tell you to go back to the drawing board and reconsider keeping it the way it was. When I sat on the EDC, we spent a million dollars building that park that's south of it, north, I guess, south of it, yeah. And the point is, we do have a need in our community for the seniors, and I think this is much needed, and for you guys to come and tell us in your presentation that there's not a need or demand for it, and that's why you wanna switch it to apartments, I think it's just not correct. I don't think it was good intentions to ever keep it a senior center, I think it was sold to us to make it look attractive, and then you guys are flipping the script. I would ask my colleagues on this council that there is a lot more burden on our school systems, on our taxpayer base, when we switch this to an apartment instead of a senior center. So, I would urge you guys to say no, and let the developer go back and work this out, and these guys keep coming back to us with these grand plans, they do part of it, and then they come back and they say, oh, it's no longer viable. I'm sorry, you would not have approved this seven years ago or eight years ago if they had shown 800 apartments, we wouldn't have approved it. So, I would ask you guys to really consider that today, to send the message, I've been here for a year, and we keep turning the script every time, and I don't think it's fair to our taxpayers or our residents. Get these developers to hold their feet to the fire, they agreed to this. I'm sorry, I don't see why we have to take the burden and let them do whatever they want, then we shouldn't even worry about that, we should just say, do whatever you want. Every few years, they come back and they say, well, it's not viable, it's not viable, not my problem.
Any other questions, comments? Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor.
Staff, can you remind me about the phasing requirements, or kinda where we are in the total PD?
So, I don't have the phasing plan directly in front of me, so this is off memory, they, in order for them to construct the first building, they had to go through all of the infrastructure, had to build the roads that you see, so they had to build Modern Green, and then Ivy Park Terrace and Spectrum Boulevard, and then this portion of Promenade Shops Drive, all of those have been completed. Then they moved on to getting the first building built, which is, as you saw, nearly complete, and then, as I recall, Phase Two or Three included either the townhome or the CCRC development to come through.
Okay, I guess the applicant, are you any more familiar, since he was doing it by memory, that y'all know it?
I guess, really, the question is, do you guys understand the phasing, the phasing requirements and the infrastructure with those phasing requirements? That's really the basis of it, yeah.
Basically, following that phasing list of apartment complex was supposed to go first, then townhomes, or, and/or the CCRC, then the office space and convention on 288. Another thing to note, this, this site and this development are not in Pearland ISD, it's in Houston ISD. It's not something that's going to impact the school system.
All right, thank you. You know, to Councilman Patel's point, I mean, I was up here for a lot of the back-and-forth through this PD, and, yeah, if it would have been brought to us with two, two blocks of multifamily and some townhomes, I don't know that it would have gotten approved back then. Yeah, I struggle, I struggle with this one, especially with that frontage still there. I know it's not, maybe not in the plans today, but, you know, you break ground on, on the next round of multifamily, and, and all of a sudden, well, the office market's just not where we want it, it's kinda, kinda soft, but residential multifamily's doing good, so I could see that coming back, so I'm, I'm open to discussion, but I'm, I'm struggling with just another, another chunk of multifamily. That CCRC, I know, made a lot of sense, at least when it was pitched to us the first time, so it, it does, I'm not saying that it was pitched with that intent to come back, I'm careful not to describe a tent to anybody, but it, it really changes the look and feel of this, this part of town.
I'd say a few things to that, so, one thing I do wanna clarify is, we're here at Suba, which we are a multifamily developer, we are not the master developer of the Ivy District, we're not American Modern Green. I can tell you that throughout our experience and involvement, that was always planned for condominium and retirement community, and Modern Green had actively sought out developers like us, but in that space, in condominiums, because we don't do condominiums, we don't do assisted living, they were unable to find a partner, and it was only recently that they approached us, and we worked together on this, on this PD now, and with no plans or discussions, I'm aware of, of any, of a third potential phase right on the frontage. And the second thing is, I would add is, one of the things we're seeing, as we build multifamily adjacent to commercial, and when we ourselves own property that is intended for commercial and office use, some of the first questions we get from those developers of retail centers, of offices, where are the residents? You know, they want a critical mass physically present that can be the demand for their end uses. Now, we, we're great that we're on 288, that's incredible visibility, and it will, in and of itself, be a demand driver, what's gonna be, what's gonna take this over the top to get it developed, the commercial site, would be the, the quality of residents that we're building, and the critical mass of demand together when the townhouses come on to, come online as well.
And I guess a question for staff, is there any other infrastructure that, that we need out there that would make sense to potentially speed up or get on the ground?
So, as far as I'm aware, they completed all of their traffic impact analyses, the water wastewater bins, drainage, master lighting, and it's mainly just keeping up with the landscaping as they have some landscaping installed within the right-of-ways, and those improvements that typically just take additional eyesight to ensure that they're kept up and maintained.
Any other questions, comments?
So, I truly believe what you're saying, I don't believe that this was planned to flip or change, I believe that assisted livin', a living was planned to go here, and I do know that the assisted living market is tough right now, the project that Member Patel was talking about behind HEB, it's actually in foreclosure because they couldn't make it, however, it's still, is what was presented to us, to the point where we even, I say we, the PEDC invested money in this, and invested it with this plan in mind, and I agree with Member Patel and Member Carbone that if, if this was brought to us as 800 apartment units, then I think there would be, there would be changes on our end, so, initially, so, even, you know, I mean, even though that, that, I'm just saying, I truly believe that that wasn't the intent, but however, it's still what was, what was presented to us. I just wanted to make that.
And I wanna...
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I would just say, like, since that time, we have since built, and we're nearly opened on the first phase, so you can actually see, you know, what it is we proposed, you know, back then, it was sort of conceptual, right? What are they gonna build, 800 units, 800 units of what? Will it be high-quality? Will it attract crime? I mean, then, once you see what it is we actually built, we consider ourselves to be in the top tier of Houston multifamily developers, A-plus, high-quality luxury living, we have a long history in Pearland, having developed the residences at Pearland Town Center back in 2012, so, I, I hope now that we can actually see what we've built, if you haven't actually been on the site, I'd encourage you to go actually take a look, rather than just drive by on 288 and see what we think it, an impressive community it is.
And I'm gonna agree with you, I think the, the product you guys are putting on the ground is great, I'm also gonna agree that you guys are not the one that presented this and brought this, and then not the, and I, but also, the, the developer that did present this and that did bring to this, they're not here tonight to answer for why we're getting the change, and, and, you know, again, you guys put a good product on the ground, you've done everything that you guys agreed to, and I fully understand that, but I, I think I'm just looking for more answers on this.
Yeah, real quick, before we move on, I want to address the, the development that's now defunct behind HEB over there, I just kinda wanna clear the record, the owner of that passed away, and through the estate, through everything else, it went back to the bank. So, it didn't go defunct on the fact of somebody not doing their job or whatever, it went, it went defunct because somebody passed away, and I'm actually meeting with the development team, they reached out to me tomorrow, because they have some interest in maybe going in there and taking a look at it, seeing what they can do. The problem is with that one, it may be mold-ridden so much that they can't do anything with it except bring it down, but, so I wanted to clear the air on, on, on that one. At the end of the day, I look at this, and, I mean, whether it's condos or apartments, it's, it's 800 units of multifamily, what it is, maybe some ownership with a CCR, you know, with a, with a aged community there, and I would question, the, the folks from Modern Green from China came in, did this, this is something that's very prevalent back in China, people come into a facility like this, they buy their space, they live there, and ultimately pass it, or sell it, or whatever, just like anyone would do with their property, and I questioned, I questioned at the time, and I question now, the viability of that in this marketplace, bringing that market from China here and trying to do the same thing, which is why I think the folks at Modern Green really didn't find anybody locally in that space to be able to do what simply really doesn't do much... to be in that space to be able to do what simply really doesn't do much. That product doesn't do well or doesn't do that in this, in this country. And so we do have, that is a multifamily building, whether it's condos or not, it's multifamily. It's for sale or it's for rent, it's a multifamily product. So what we have zoned is upwards of eight hundred multifamily units. We're talking about whether it's going to be rented or owned, and we're talking about the age of the people living there versus what was done before. It's my understanding that the infrastructure for the townhomes is under construction as we speak. They're real close to finishing that infrastructure, so that block is getting close. Was told by Vance that even some of the units themselves are in for permitting, so they can go to permitting on the vertical structure pretty quick. So that's moving, that's moving around. And I'll say this, there is a marketplace. And this was zoned eight, nine, 10 years ago. And I would tell you, the market for office and those types of things is different four years ago, let alone what it is today. I certainly understand, the last thing, try to go, try to go get financing for a four, five, six story office building in today's market. Good luck, you're not going to get it. You're not going to get it without putting, you know, more equity into it, then you might as well just pay cash for the whole, the whole thing as opposed to getting financing. So the marketplace is real. I certainly understand, you know, the, the concerns there, but I certainly don't believe that anybody's trying to do a bait and switch. That, that is not, I don't see that as an intent with this group. I don't see the intent of Modern Green. If they want to do bait and switch, they would have been here much sooner. Clearly, this, this product or this development's been on the ground for quite a few years. COVID certainly exacerbated a lot of things in the middle of it that, that, that no one was expecting in 2016-ish when, you know, this zoning was approved. Certainly, so, you know, I, so I think what we're talking about, the look and feel, the number of units, we're talking about the same number, actually a few, few less. It's ownership versus condo and it's the age restriction that's on it. Those are the two basic issues that you're talking about here. So Suba is a, a class developer, or a class contractor that does a great job. Actually looking forward to, to seeing your finished product. You're getting real close to the finished product next door. Looking to see this whole thing come to life. Mr. Patel's point, we've had a park sitting out there for a few years now, so it'd be nice to see these residents around it and, and getting used to it. With that, last call for questions, comments. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move to new business item number one. Ms. Chavaria, would you present that please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number 200M dash 257, so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We've had a staff report as well as questions and comments from council. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Chavaria?
No.
Member Byrom?
Aye.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Tuman?
No.
Member Patel?
No.
Mayor Patim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kosa?
Aye.
Motion fails two to five.
All right, with that, we'll move to public hearing number two. Martin, same drill.
Thank you, Mayor. This is public hearing number two, a request by Mo Khalie, applicant on behalf of 2701 Partner LLC owner for approval of amendments to the Province Village Plan Development on approximately 1.707 acres of land. This is generally located at 2701 Pearland Parkway. So this is for amendments to that existing plan development. Future land use has this property as retail offices and services. And through our public comment, we received no comments either in favor or against this request. As you can see here on the aerial and zoning map, Province Village has a mixture of uses, both with retail and residential developments. In particular, the highlighted yellow section is within the retail offices and services. But then the remainder of the Province Village is also within the medium density residential. Again, taking a look at a closer detail, you can see shopping centers across Pearland Parkway, a bank just to the north of Province Village Drive, daycare to, behind the little shopping center. And then Lowe's Home Improvement Store just to the south of the property. Originally, the PD was approved in June of 2005, consisting of 47.65 acres with a mixture of uses. There's been a variety of amendments, most recently amendment number three of the PD was approved in, I should say amendment number two of the PD was approved in October of 2014. That changed the underlying zoning for this subject property from office professional to general business. And through that, they limited the uses that were allowed on that piece of property even further than what would typically be allowed within the general business. Again, that property was plotted in 2014 and developed with a 14,950 square foot multi-tenant retail building. And then amendment number four had, or was approved in July of 2021. And that added in the use for the gym health club use into the permitted list of use, or permitted uses list. And that was for the cycle bar to open up. So this request is a very similar request to add in the mathnasium learning center use. Here you can see a view of the property from Pearland Parkway. And then staff finds that the proposed amendment is consistent with criteria for approval. And it's congruent with the retail offices and services, future land use designation and is complimentary to the general, general commercial area that has been developed there. With that, staff recommends, recommended approval of this amendment to add onto that additional, that use onto that list. With that, the Planning and Zoning Commission held their meeting on June 3rd. With, they discussed, one of the major topics was whether or not to keep on adding to the list of uses or to come in with a revised list for general business or just to go straight to general business. With that, the applicant stated that it was just faster for them to add on that one use rather than to go back and figure out which additional uses may be desired in the future. Through all of that, Planning and Zoning voted six to zero to approve the amendment to the Province Village Plan Development. With that, Mayor, I'll pass back to you.
Thank you, Martin. Is the applicant present? Do you have any presentation or are you just here to answer questions? Okay, thank you for that. With that, we will move to open it up for the public. Those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request can go to the podium, give us your name and address and have three minutes to speak. Second attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. All right, seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll open it up for city council, questions, comments, concerns.
Carbone? Thank you, Mayor. And one of the pictures from across the street showing the subject property and the, the signs there, so businesses operational?
No, sometimes businesses get their signage ahead of their occupancy. And this is just one where the sign contractor was very good at getting the tenants' needs taken care of.
Wow, alright. Yeah, that was my question. I, I think the use is fine right there. I mean, you, you teach math, I've got CPA firm right next door, so maybe I can recruit some interns. But I, I, I think, I think the use is, is fine.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, Martin, could you explain to our, of like, why this is such a restrictive process right here? Cause normally, strip shopping center wouldn't have this type of requirement to have a math tutoring company come in.
Right, so whenever the, whenever Province Village came through, as you can see, there were some, some areas on Broadway that were included in Province Village. I believe, and I wasn't here at the time, the desire was to keep Pearland Parkway with a cleaner environment and to have a potentially higher standard of clientele on the Pearland Parkway side, which is why they were limiting the uses and taking out what would normally be allowed within general business. Through that, they've found some tenants that are on the, you know, good tenants to have, be it mathnasium, be it cycle bar, and have just unfortunately needed to come forward and request additional uses get added over the years.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Yeah, I think echoing the sentiments, this PD was put in with some extremely restrictive language to it. Hopefully, we can clean some of this stuff up in the UDC, but this was a PD that restricted it, so UDC language won't do that. So indulging our, our, your pages a little bit here as we get through this process. So we'll close the documented public hearing and we'll open it up to new business item number two. Mr. Carbone, if you'd present that please.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance 2000M dash 258, so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We've had staff report as well as questions, comments from council. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Patim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kosa?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Byrom?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, we're now to Joel for public hearing number three. Yeah, there you are. You'd read into the record the reason and move on into it.
Actually, Mayor and Council, we're going to let Michael Rollinson handle this tonight.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the first public hearing for the 18th Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant. This will be program year 2024, which is City of Pearland fiscal year 2025. And our allocation this year is $456,770. A little background on the Community Development Block Grant is, it is through the Department of Housing and Urban Development and is allocated to cities with a population over 50,000. The City of Pearland met this threshold in 2006. Prior to that, we received the funding through Bexarria County. It's a fairly flexible program with spending at the discretion of the entitlement city, so long as we stay within the HUD regulations and federal uniform guidance. And these are covered under 24 CFR 570 and 2 CFR 200. There are 24 total spending categories available, including housing, social services and infrastructure improvements. The purpose of the program is to meet HUD's national objectives, which include removing slum and blight, meeting urgent needs such as natural disasters and catastrophic events, and serving low to moderate income residents. This is, includes individuals or households that are at or below an 80% threshold of, of the metropolitan statistical area income level and areas that are 51% or more low to moderate income. Now, on this, Pearland is a bit of an exception. Since we don't have a lot of areas that are 51% or more low to moderate income, we are able to get an exception to do 44.8%. HUD uses two formulas to determine the method of distribution of funds. Pearland falls under Formula A. Formula B is have more heavily weighted for pre-1940 housing units. And City of Pearland just doesn't have a lot of those. You'll find more of those on the East Coast and in larger cities. When determining the action plan, we assess the existing local housing in the economy, other local conditions such as needed social and public services, homelessness, nonprofit organizations, public infrastructure, and any unmet needs or medium to high priorities that are needing funding. As stated, the individuals who gained, who gained this assistance fall within that, within that 80% MSA. And so for this year, a family of four would have to make under $85,050 to be eligible. This map just shows the tracks that we have looked at in the past for, that have fallen within these categories for the areas we look at. We are, will be, of course, looking at that with this action plan to make sure that these are still accurate and see if we need to add any more or reduce it by any. This graph shows the allocations that we've received since the City of Pearland started receiving these allocations directly. The blue is what we have spent, what we have spent from all these allocations. The purple is what has been reallocated to the GLO project. And then the yellow are projects that are still in process, but the funds have just not been drawn down yet. And for, for most of these, I believe we intend to draw the funds down soon, or we are still working on those projects. The green is this current year allocation. When doing our planning, we have two different, we have two different plans that we focus on. The consolidated plan is a five-year plan that is very high level and takes into account community conditions, population changes and other high, higher level items. And then we use that to guide our action plans, which are more granular in how we actually expend these funds. For this year, we're currently, and this is very preliminary, looking at spending options of program support, which is the administrative cost for the city, for staff and other, other items that has a 20% cap. And this year, we are allocating the full 20% of $91,354. And I would also note that this is not just for, not for working on this year's grant, but also the prior grants that are still in process, so like the GLO items. Social Services has a cap of 15%. These are items that we typically help with our, or work with our nonprofit partners on. And they, so we have allocated the full $68,515 for that. The rest, we currently have allocated to home, to the housing repair program. The reason for this is because the housing repair program has had some explosive growth in the past year. Whereas in the, in the prior years, we've done two homes in 2022, three homes in 2023. This past year, we've done 11 and we have five more currently in process. And we've expended about $158,000 so far, with another $33,000 in process. So we are expending those funds rapidly and getting a good return on that investment. All right, a few, a few of the key dates for the plan. We opened our 30-day public comment period on June 13th and it'll end on July 15th, 2024. We intend to have the second public hearing on August 12th at the regular council meeting then. And then we will ask for council adoption on that same meeting. A day or two after that, we will submit this program to HUD through their system. And with that, I will turn the balance back over to council.
All right, thank you for that. We'll open it up to the public. Those wishing to speak on this proposed plan through using CDBG funding, go to the podium, give us your name and address. You have three minutes to speak. Second call for anyone in the public that would like to offer comment and testimony in this public hearing. Third and final time, those wishing to speak on this public hearing involving our community block grant annual allocation. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll turn it over to city council for questions, comments and concerns. Seeing none, we'll close this documented public hearing and we'll look forward to that on an agenda coming up soon. With that, we'll move to new business item number three. Mr. Byrom, would you present it please?
Consideration possible action, resolution number R2024-91, so moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the annual comprehensive financial report for the city for the year ended 30th of September 2023. And tonight, we have Patrick Simmons, the audit partner with Whitley Penn. You are the city's independent auditor. Patrick will present the report and answer questions on the audit.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Patrick Simmons. I'm the Audit Partner on your fiscal year 2023 engagement. And I'm happy to present the results of the audit this year. And so a quick introduction to our engagement team. We had Sean Berry, the Senior Auditor, Andrew Jeanette, the Audit Manager, myself as the Partner, and then Lupe Garcia as the Engagement Quality Control Reviewer. As part of the audit process, we do come out in the summertime normally. Since this was our first year returning as your auditors, we did do all this stops, one, two, and three, all at once. We were in the field shortly after the calendar year started, and we were in the field for about six weeks, right? And so we did walkthroughs with all your different departments, and we tested internal controls. And we obtained your trial balance, and we did the year-end field work as well. And so all that goes into providing an opinion on your financial statements. I have listed the different areas that we met with along the way. And we either tested a sample of controls here, internal controls, or we performed walkthrough procedures, but for the most of them, we did do some detailed internal control testing. And the purpose of our, our role in the process is to provide an opinion on whether or not the financial statements can be relied upon and whether or not they are free of material misstatement. And there are three different types of opinions we can provide. Although I know this is pretty hard to see on the screen, but the best opinion there is the unmodified opinion on the right. And so I'm happy to report we're issuing an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statement. So it's the highest level of assurance that we can provide on a set of financial statements, and it gives the readers reasonable assurance that the financial statements can be relied upon. And so along with the audit report, there are two other reports that are in the file that go along with it. And so there's an audit report on internal control and compliance. And with that, you did have some findings last year. You had three material weaknesses last year. And this year, that has been narrowed down and improved to one significant deficiency. So the difference between the two, so a material weakness is a control deficiency that the likelihood it could contribute to a material misstatement in the financial statements is plausible. And so a significant deficiency is similar, but it doesn't normally lead to a material misstatement. So there's still some work to do, but there's controls in place to prevent material misstatements. And so that is a very big improvement from last year, and it's definitely good to see that. And I know the city worked very hard to get it there. And then we also didn't, we didn't note any instances of noncompliance material to the financial statements. And the third report that we issue is on the federal single audit side. And so we rotate major programs each year. So this year is the Highway Planning and Construction Cluster and the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. And so we had no findings or question costs noted in that area. And this slide is a, it's very small. There's a lot of information in here. I'm just, I'll hit the highlights, but we do also issue a formal letter that's a few pages long that goes through these. But this year, you did implement a new accounting standard, and that was related to subscription software. So you'll see a long-term asset, long-term liability for those. There's accounting estimates that go into your financial statements, and we took a look at those and determined those are in accordance with industry standards and consistent with previous years. We do note significant risks during our audit, and we do have two listed here, and those are just standard in all of our governmental audits. But I did want to disclose that to you here, because if you get the letter that we send out annually, you would note those. And I'm so wanting to bring those to your attention, just to let you know those are standard in all of our governmental audits. But if any new significant risk came up, we would let you know those at the conclusion of the audit. And then there were some misstatements that were identified during the process, during the audit, and those were all corrected. And we had no disagreements with management, no difficulties with management. It was a pleasure working with you all for my first time or many, many years. And I want to give thanks to your team and thank you for being patient as we did work through the final stages of the audit. And I know we're all happy to be here, and we're already looking towards next year. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right. Does that conclude all the staff report? All right. We'll turn it over to questions, comments from council. Ms. Avery.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Patrick. I just want to congratulate you all on a clean audit. I know that there's a lot of work behind that. But I do, I would like staff to talk a little bit about their corrective action plan. So as we move forward, we know that this is not going to be something that will be presented next year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the Audit Committee is aware, there has been considerable work carried out over the last year or so to improve the process of reconciling capital assets and ensuring those are booked on a timely basis and depreciation is charged in the correct manner. That work is ongoing. The Audit Committee will receive quarterly reports from us and also with input from Patrick and his team. And our plan is that by next year, this significant deficiency will be removed, and we will have a wholly clean audit.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Carbone?
Yep. Just a quick question about, was it ASB 96, the new subscription base? That's got the interest rate in there. Is, and is that interest rate going to change with market? Because everything on there is sub-three. And if so, how does that affect the calculation in the next year?
And it'll be the same for the agreements that are in place as that you see there. That interest rate won't change. The first year of implementation, it was whatever the interest rate was at the time the agreements were entered into. And a lot of these agreements don't actually have interest rates stated in the agreement. So you use a incremental borrowing rate. And so going forward, if there's any that don't have that in the agreement, regardless, the interest rate would be higher for any new agreement.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Questions, comments? Patel, did you have a question real quick? Okay, just.
No, sir. Thank you.
I guess the last comment I'd say, Mayor, is there's supplementary information here. And down at the very end, it gives us the top, what, top 10 taxpayers, both in 2014 and 2024. And from what I can tell, the seven out of 10 are multifamily. And so that, that's a tough, we had the vote earlier. It's a, it's a tough balance of we're not wanting to raise rates. We want assessed value on the ground to help with the, your single-family residence tax rate and tax burden. So I know a lot of times people ask, what, what's the, what's the value? And part of this, this audit report, or at least the supplementary file, shows what we're looking at from a taxable value standpoint.
Yeah. And when school districts even prove to you that there's not a burden to the school district to having, you know, multifamily in there. In fact, it's a cash cow. So kind of an interesting, interesting dichotomy that we have tonight. But I know some of our top taxpayers are that. And, but I want to thank Patrick and Whitley Penn for the work that you guys have done this year. You know, we were, I'll just say it, we were in a rough spot with some of our previous consultant. I'll say that. I won't name their names. But you guys came in and took over and have done a great job getting us here. I think with y'all's guidance along the way, even between now and when we start this next year, it'll be even better, smoother, certainly, as we come around this time next year and have an even better audit. This is much better than where we were. I think we still have some corrective action that we've been working through. And those, those things have taken place and have done a good job getting us to where we need to be in this particular audit. So I know over the last couple of years, this is certainly the best audit we've seen. And I want to thank you guys. I want to thank everyone in our, in our staff, Kendra and your, your team as well for the work that you guys have done in working with Whitley Penn, as well as getting, getting us to where we need to be in our, in our financial department. I appreciate very much all of that. With that, last call for questions. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Byram.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Tuman.
Aye.
Member Patel.
Aye.
Mayor Patim Carbone.
Aye.
Member Coza.
Aye.
Member Chavedia.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Ms. Cade, coming to you. If you'll present item number four, please.
Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1633.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
And, Mayor, this item is the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the Pearland 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So this was originally, had a public hearing in November of '23. And after going back out for additional public input and additional council input, we're ready to present the comp plan for adoption. So at this point, I'm going to hand it over to our Community Development Director, Vance Wiley, for a brief presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Trent. Good evening, everybody, mayor, member of council. Before I dive in, just a quick presentation here. I do want to take a moment and thank all of y'all. So each of you has now spent hours with staff and individually spoken to us about the comp plan and its inner workings. And so really do appreciate y'all taking the time to familiarize yourself with the document and also make sure staff's on the right direction and has a good understanding of what we want tomorrow to look like. So with that, I wanted to start with just what is a comp plan? A comprehensive plan is a statement of the community's vision now and for the future. In addition to providing guidance for land use and development, the comp plan keeps staff in tune with citizens' desires for tomorrow. Then the vision statement coming out of Pearland 2040 is Pearland is the community of choice, providing its diverse population with a strong economy balanced by a mix of uses. Places of value where people desire to live, work, and play, and making smart investments in existing and future assets. So now just a little bit about what comp plans are not. Comp plans are not the same as zoning regulations. Zoning regulations may be guided by comprehensive plans. The Future Land Use Plan and other recommendations are not legally binding when the comprehensive plan is adopted. So even once adopted, this is not a legally binding document. The Future Land Use Plan is referenced during zone changers requests before P&amp;Z and City Council. You've seen those tonight. And then staff and developers use the comp plan as a guide for future projects and what tomorrow can look like. So I wanted to take a moment just to look at the Future Land Use Plan. To the left, you'll see the bottom left there is land use, and that's from our 2015 Existing Comprehensive Plan. And in the middle is that Comprehensive Plan, the land use category. And off to the right, you'll see where we transitioned those into what's now called place types. And so the big change there is more, I'm going to say warm and fuzzy, that change. And it's just because the focus goes from being on specific uses, which are very literal, into place types, which is more focused on character or the look and feel of the area. So here, just to show the Future Land Use Plan, once, if adopted, what it would look like. And then just to say, if the comprehensive plan was adopted today, no one would wake up tomorrow and have new regulations or a property that's zoned any differently. So from previous discussions, I did want to take a moment on accessory dwelling units. I think listening to everyone, which was a variety of feedback on this particular topic, I think it's important that we understand the comp plan will make no changes to our current zoning category. And then with the upcoming UDC rewrite, I think that's sort of a mechanism where we'll really get to polish on how accessory dwelling units are done in our community. So as we all know, the UDC is currently closing up the RFQ process, and we'll be moving through that. And again, just to, just to own it, I know it's an 18 to 24-month process, but I think that's the how through stakeholder committees, we could really hone in on the regulations for that, for this developments opportunity. And then the final item there I have is just enforcement, because I think it's important to keep in mind that even good rules don't stop things done without permitting or outside of the law. And so when we do come across issues, it's important that us as an organization, the City of Pearland, has prompt enforcement and is able to get items corrected either legally through the process and getting them on tracks or the other legal option, which is removed. So just a quick public input summary. Throughout this almost three-year process now, we've had 33 public meetings, 453 in-person participants, 1,213 surveys completed, 2,194 users online for over, for a total of over 3,700 participants through the comp plan process. And then just to summarize, before I hand it back to you, Mayor Cole, the comp plan does not set zoning, but it is used to evaluate future development. Comp plans do not create budgetary obligations. This was a comment from previous discussions. So while the comp plan will make a variety of suggestions of things we should keep on our radar, those are all contingent when it comes to funding based off of our current situation, development trends, and obviously the availability of funds in the future. There was also some comments and discussion about the Conference Center references with, with the update to the Prosperity Plan, which removed the Conference Center. That's also been done here in the comp plan. So there's no, there's one reference to a Conference Center in the Comprehensive Plan, and that's from a public meeting. So it's just quoting somebody, the accessory dwelling unit piece of the conversation. And then finally, just that public input summary we just covered. With that, Mayor, I'll bounce it back to you.
All right. Thank you for that. With that, we'll throw it to council for questions, comments, concerns. Ms. Avery.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for your report. Can you explain to me the current mechanism for ADUs? Like, what is that process?
Yes, ma'am. So currently, an accessory dwelling unit, if it was going to be allowed in any area that's zoned residential, would come before City Council for a conditional use permit. And so in areas not zoned residential, they are allowed by right. However, anything in our existing neighborhoods would come before you, before y'all for approval.
All right. Questions, comments? Mr. Carbone?
Along the ADU topic, you know, looking through here, there's specific actions called out in what, 6.2 and 6.5, specific to ADUs. And I guess on 6.2 says, provide a clear path forward permitting, or permitting within existing residential neighborhoods. I think that's, from my standpoint, that causes the heartburn. I would be a fan of adding some, a little bit of different language protecting our current residential zoning. Because I don't think it's the intent of the plan, or at least it wouldn't be my intent for this to provide a pathway to ADUs in our four neighborhoods overnight, even overnight. Like if, if somebody bought within a single-family neighborhood and they've got a single-family around them, I don't know that we need a path forward for ADUs, except in limited circumstances. So, and I get this isn't the, this isn't the UDC rewrite, but I would, I would prefer to beef up that language a little bit, or maybe to clarify, add some clarifying language in 6.2 and 6.5 around the ADUs. I'm only one of seven, so if I'm on an island, that's cool. Don't listen to me.
I would be in agreement with you on that, Tony. I can see a, a value in ADUs, and I can see a use for them, but not at the expense of the established neighborhoods throughout our community that have been here for years. So something that would beef that, that direction up, as you said, it's more of a vision. Where to go is a future, not a directive. But if we're casting vision, let's cast that vision as we're, we're okay with them, but in, in a confined environment.
Thank you, Mayor. As one of, I guess, the most ardent non-supporters of ADUs, Vance, we, I guess, visited on this in November. And then sometime in December, we had a survey go out. And the one question that addressed ADUs, could you give us what the results were for against ADUs?
I'll ask Martin. Can you help me out on that, Martin? And he can pull the survey up. Just one moment, please.
Thank you, Member Coza. So question number three was, what type of housing do you think are necessary to support our residents? Of that, we had 1,057 respondents, 87% save for single-family detached homes, 575 for single-family attached homes, such as townhomes, 297 or 24% for small apartments, those are, those with four to 12 units. And then 214 for apartment complexes, those with 12 or more units. And then 153, which was 13% responding that accessory dwelling units were necessary to support residents.
So my review of that would say that you've got 13%, so it's not a very big response for this type of structure, unit, whatever you want to call it, within our single-family dwelling, residentially zoned areas. Would you agree with that?
One in 10 is still one in 10. I mean, that is a small percentage, but one in 10. I mean, that is a small percentage, but one in ten is better than one percent.
And also, real quick, I think, I think the phrasing of the question matters just as far as I interpreted those results, and this could be incorrect, but I interpreted those results as what housing options should we have available? And thirteen percent disagree that that is something we should offer. I think, just rephrasing there, but I don't know that it's a recommend, I don't know that saying eighty-seven percent are saying we don't want it.
Could, could the respondents select multiple categories, or was it?
Yes, respondents could click multiple.
I would say that's a negative view. Matter of semantics of which side of the coin you want to look at it. In our overview right here on page four twenty-five of four twenty-five from Kimberly Horn, it has kind of overview of the city. You pull that up by chance? It's the last page of our presentation.
And just give me one moment. Are you, are you in the actual plan itself, sir?
Yes, sir. When I pulled it up on my, I read it, it was four twenty-five out of four twenty-five. That would be the last page. There we go. So looking at this right here, would it be a fair assessment to say that the largest zoned area in our community is residential?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So during our strategic retreat back in February, I don't remember what Patrick's last name was, but he eloquently pointed out that if you pass an ADU in your in your residentially zoned, basically, you've gutted your residentially zoned areas. You've now made them multifamily. Would you agree with that, yes or no?
I would disagree, but it's just my opinion.
Fair enough. Because to me, what you're, what you're doing is you're taking the single largest asset that somebody, or for the most part, people buy. And you and I have had numerous conversations whether it rose to the level of an ADU, how they go wrong. And I'm quite aware of some that have gone way wrong. We have one currently that's being looked at right now that the residents aren't happy. And it's not a big issue to you and me when we don't have anything like this next to you. But when it does show up next to you and you do get somebody that comes or goes, it becomes a big problem. And I know you and I have had multiple discussions on my disdain for them. But with that being said, I've also said that, you know, if we're gonna zone something, instead of turning upside down current zoning, zone new areas as such. And say, you know, in this area of town, just like we have R one, R two, R three, R four, come up with R five, or whatever you want to call it, where you allow ADUs in the town so that you're not going into existing homes. And I, I would be more in favor of that instead of just a blanket across, across the city. On page two fifty-six of four twenty-five in our presentation that we have, at the bottom of it, it says one fifty of one fifty-nine. Yeah, that's it. Nope. Go back down, right there. So if you go midway in this presentation right here, it says the city is already getting protests about people trying to build barns on large lots in Shadow Creek. Should anticipate pushback. This is current neighborhoods. It goes back to my argument, this isn't me saying it. It's Kimberly Horn's compilation of what they received. Right there in its place, it's showing up. You know, here again, I'll go back to my disdain for these in existing neighborhoods. And if we go to three forty-three of four twenty-five, this one says created by the city of Pearland, there we go. About three quarters of the way down, under issues to be considered with housing diversity. Towards the end of that first paragraph, it says one of the biggest challenges is the community resistance to placement of other types of housing types within near the existing neighborhoods and the perceived fears of decreasing property values. Here's another statement within this that I don't quite get when a consultant comes in here and says blanketly, let's do this. What I have seen is, I guess, my opinion, that they take these type canned answers and responses and plans and say, hey, this would be great. And you'll see it here, you'll see it there, you'll see it in the next community, because it's easy for them to come in and say, here's what we need to do, charge their charges and move on. In my opinion here, I think this is wrong for Pearland. Want to, if we want to take this, I again will say, let's zone it in an area, not in existing neighborhoods, and, and move that way. So with that being said, remember Carbone was talking about six point two in the land use. It said encourage the development, or excuse me. That was the that was the hotel conference center. But six point two under housing, it says study different types of attached dwelling units, ADUs, and provide clear paths forward for permitting within existing residential neighborhoods. It states that point blank in existence. I think what we've heard so far, there's not much flavor for that. So with that being said, I don't know if my council members would be up for this or not, but I would like to offer an amendment to this comprehensive plan of taking it and saying we will have ADUs in new developments and not in our existing housing stock. So if anybody likes second, I'd like to have a discussion on it and, and move forward or not, either way.
Mayor Cole, if I may, I apologize. I think it is important to note that there's no change to the accessory dwelling unit proposed right now. So even if the comp plan, which is not up for adoption tonight, this is just our first reading, and glad to take comments back and work with Kimberly Horn to polish those and come back. So thank you for the comments, and please keep them coming. But the future landing, then there, even if this Pearland twenty forty is adopted today, it's not. There would be no change to the ADU process. So we're not rezoning property, this exists now.
And Mayor, I would say that we did this in November, and we wasted our time. I asked for this back in November, and here we sit in June, and there was no movement towards that.
Well, also in November, we wanted more input.
That's fine, and we got it, and it was
We got it. So, yeah, and, and right now, we don't have a second for that. But I think we still need to have some conversations about ADUs and, and the use. I guess what I don't
I would ask for a second because I was interrupted.
I gave quite a bit of time, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. So I don't even know what the amendment is. I guess it's to
To take the ADUs and use them and then exist, or excuse me, new developments within the city of Pearland, not existing homes.
A question, a word, a question to the amendment. Define new development.
New development would be anything developed moving forward in the, in the city. So if, if you want to get into new areas, in areas that are not zoned currently. So if you came in, we'd need to have a zoning saying that you have R one, R two, whatever you do zone it with ADUs. Currently, there's a neighborhood called Baker's Landing on thirty-five. And they built homes, first time I ever saw one in city of Pearland. And you walk through the home, you'll see a, I want to call it half a home, that's a home. You open a door, and all of a sudden, you're in a second home. At that point, the definition, you know, here again, it gets to semantics. There's not an oven in the second home. So that means it's not a home. So you're playing the game of, you know, walking the line of, is it another home, is it not? It has a bedroom, it has a living room, it has a kitchen, minus
Yeah, it's multi, it's multi-generational, multi-generational homes where, you know, it's built that way from the, from the very beginning, and that's what the intent is behind it as well. And that's Baker's Landing actually, and D.R. Horton actually advertised and marketed multi-generational homes in their, in their, in their deal. Because when I
I would agree with that because they advertised it. But if you take somebody's neighborhood
Sure.
And say, we're gonna switch it up on you.
Sure. And, and, and I, and I, and I get that. This is, this is a tough case because in, in many of our cases, you know, many of us may be tasked with taking care of a loved one late in their age, and have to bring them into a home, retrofit a home, outfit a home, add on to a home, and those types of things. And if they're in an existing neighborhood, they have to look at mom and dad and say, I can bring you in, but I can't do X, Y, and Z for you here under this, under what's being proposed. And I, I don't know that that's right. At the same time, I understand the neighbor and the neighborhood effect. And I, and I agree with you that we don't want to destroy the neighborhood feel, the neighborhood, you know, what's there currently. And, and I would even echo what Mayor Protim said, that, that even in an R four situation, I don't, I don't know how you do much of this because of setbacks. I mean, you're getting into an area where it's, where it's, where it's pretty hard.
I can show you one in their presentation.
And I, and I, and I'm not saying it doesn't exist, I'm just saying it gets harder and harder. You know, and I, and I'll, I'll share with the public. I mean, I plan to build a new home here soon. And my plan is to have a or three bedrooms on the back, one that we can convert and add on, a mother-in-law quarter one day. Under this, I can't do it. It just took that plan completely off the table.
And my argument to that would be, I've heard it in this chambers in planning and zoning over and over and over. You build this today. I'm not worried about what you build. I'm worried about what comes in behind you when you no longer live there.
I know.
And we shoot stuff down in planning and zoning every day. Saying, no, because when this sells, and this is where it has the propensity to take this from single-family to multifamily.
I hear you.
Darren, I asked this question last time. When mom or dad dies, and the folks that live there currently, one, either decide to rent that, or two, sell their home and move on, how do we regulate that?
It's virtually impossible for the city to regulate those circumstances. Absent us going around and taking blood tests of people to make sure they're not, whether they're related or not. And I only say that facetiously.
I understand, I understand. But so with that mechanism not there, basically, we took all of our residential, single-family, our largest zoned entity in the city, and we've thrown it out the door. So at that point, when we take people's largest investment in their life and just say, do whatever, why do we need a UDC, period? I grew up in a Pearland that didn't have a UDC. And we, we got along quite well.
Just wondered if I can continue on with my comments and my questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Because that, that's the argument we're talking about, is this is a property rights issue. And it's a property rights, and, and I argue, and I get your points, and I argue your points. I, I get that. I get both sides of this. I don't think it's as easy and cut and dry as yes or no. I don't think it's that easy. At the same time, in the current, in our current UDC, it requires the applicant to come to that podium and ask this council to grant their UDC, to grant their ADU, excuse me, too many acronyms, sorry, to, to grant it. And so I don't know why we take that option off the table. The current mechanism is this body gets to decide if it, if it meets certain criteria for a good ADU or not. And, and instead of, it's, it's, it's just by right, or if you do X, Y, and you get it, it has to come here for full vetting of a council, whether it's this council or in a council five or ten or fifteen years from now. And, and, and to me, that's, that's the ultimate judge and jury is, is here with the CUP, which does notify your neighbors immediately around. And I get to point, after a certain thing happens within a family, then what happens? I, I get that. And, and I, we have ADUs today, I don't know how many ADUs we have in the, in the, that are actually truly on the books as an ADU in the, in the, in the community, I'm sure we have some. But we also have some that predate a lot of these rules, where there's acreage lots with a house and another house in the back, all on the same property. And, and we're not asking for those to go away, but it becomes a non-conforming use. And, and I don't know what's the legalities around that in the future.
It's easy.
And so I, so I think, I, I think I do agree, we need to have, and, and I'll say this, I, I think the legislature is gonna probably force these on us. And I'm not saying we should do it because of that. But I think that's gonna be one of the next actions that we'll have to deal with. I do think we need to have an ad hoc group as part of the UDC rewrite, dive into ADUs, and, and, and understand the ins and outs and where appropriate and where not. I don't disagree with, you know, new developments planned that way from day one, that's something I've said all along. That needs to be, if it's a new development, then it needs to be planned that way. So the neighbors around, you know, need to be able to know what they're buying, or know who, what, and where it could be next door, who, what, or where it could be next door to them as they're, as they're doing that. So I, I don't, I don't disagree with a lot of what you have to say. I just say, I don't think we shut the door completely to them. I think there should be some parameters and some, some criteria around them.
I wasn't shutting the door completely to them, I was, there, there was a vow there. Martin, or not Martin, or maybe Martin or Vance, I don't know which one. How many ADUs have we had that have come to the city?
In the past eight years, we've only seen three.
Okay, how many were passed?
All three.
When I talked to some of the people that told me about the survey, when I explained to them what an ADU was, they didn't like it. So, I mean, at, at the end of the day, it's a small number. I know I've explained to y'all the five that I know that have popped up under different scenarios that have created headaches for their neighbors immediately around them. So, you know, whether it's done legally or illegally, it happens. So, I mean, from my perspective, I go back to, if it's zoned that way, I'm fine with it. But when you, when you throw it into a current zoning, that's where you're gonna have a lot of rub, and it shows in the report in two different places.
Any other questions, comments?
Mine are more clarification questions. Vance, whether this, to, to your point, whether this got voted on and passed and said, this is the law of the land tonight. People can build, for example, what the mayor's talking about wanting to do at his own home in the future, without going before planning and zoning, without a CUP, without coming before city council, so long as it's not a full kitchen with an oven, correct? Under our current UDC, you can go build a mother-in-law's quarters, living rooms, kitchen, bathroom, the whole nine yards.
No, it would require a CUP.
If there's not an oven in it.
So, and I think, and I think it's an important question, and I'm glad you're bringing it up, because that definition and the how we do this, which is the UDC, is truly where so much of this will get ironed out. I think, I think good comments for the six point two, and glad to refurbish those, those items, but, right. So if you, and Martin helped me out with the components, but whenever, so we have to regulate something, we have to define it. And whenever we define it, and it appears that we may have some polishing we want to do on our definition, which is in the UDC, part of that definition is three components. I believe it's a living space, a bedroom, and the kitchen. And then now we're in the definition of a definition, because you're wanting a kitchen. And just, we have to draw the line somewhere, and historically, it has been at the stove. And so people can install those two components, remove the stove. And then what happens after, none of us have any say over.
Right, so it's not considered an ADU in that scenario, is my point.
Oh, yes, sir.
So they can go build it with a building, then go through permitting, just build it.
Yes, sir.
Don't have to do anything, right? So
You can do that with a shared, with a shared kitchen, but if you want it separate.
Correct.
That's when it
And so I bring that point up, because I think we're, we're talking about two different things ultimately. Because an accessory dwelling unit is a full livable space, right? And that is something that it, that is somewhat different. I understand the grapple. My other point of clarification, Member Cozal, trying to understand trying to understand what you're asking for, because I kind of feel like you said two different things. Um, in your amendment for direction to city staff, are you saying that you would be okay with A D Us as a zoning category in, in any new development moving forward anywhere in the city? Or do you want it zoned like A D Us are in this area, like general business and multifamily?
That would be a zoning that just like when a developer comes in, um, we say, all right, we've got R ones here, we got R fours here, we got rent home. We have Massey Oaks right now that's got a rental, uh, aspect to it. Um, we've got the, uh, I forget the name of it down there on Ballion 35 that, uh, started out as an R four and now it's popped up rent home. Um, so if a new development comes in and you have a housing zoning section or residential zoning requirement, and you say, this is what I'd like to have. And if that's zoned in that area is residential and it's new, it's not an existing home. And why not allow that? Because then people going into that buy into that. Because like I said, it might work the first homeowner. It's the second and third and fourth, when you start getting marginal, uh, buyers of that property, can't afford the home, but I can if I rent it. What happens when somebody gets in there and says they can't afford it? And the next thing you know, they really can't and they don't find somebody to rent it.
Yeah. Again, I understand the grapple. I just wanted to get clarification with where you were trying to go. So you're looking for more of a zoning category.
Yeah. And, and you know, and I mean, if you want to include that as part of neighborhood, I'm fine with it.
Okay. So what do we actually need?
So I think, you know, we're getting into a lot of the, the zoning type discussion that'll be part of the U D C amendment. So I guess, you know, this is a, a guiding document that may provide some input towards that. And it's, and it says, study different types of A D Us and provide clear path forward permitting within existing residential neighborhoods. So I mean, a little bit of what I heard is, you know, to apply the, kind of the clear path of maybe potential future neighborhoods. But I guess what I, I haven't heard much clarity on is, um, existing, would we keep the same type of, um, uh, process we have at this point where they can do it, but they've got to go through that process and additional approval.
I guess what I was gonna say is a path forward in cert- certain zoning districts. And I think that's our intent is not this blanket, all of our residential. And beyond that, I mean, this document is huge and powerful. And I think there's probably going to be weeks discussing A D Us and ad hoc committees. And so I'd, I'd rather kick those details to them, but I guess my point would be, I've served on these before and if we leave six two as is, it's gonna, it's gonna be a challenge to them on how we do A D Us within existing residential neighborhoods. So in my opinion, we need to clean that language up to certain, path forward in certain zoning districts. And then hash the hell out of this somewhere besides this dais. And then come back with something, whether it's new district, C U Ps, whatever the process is. Yeah. And I think that's where the whole U D C rewrite and in that conjunction with that, where the teeth and the what and the how and the where and all of that gets put into it. Um, and, and I, I, I think that cleans it and brings it back with real, real clarity or real direction or real specifics on how, where, and when you can deploy these.
So the real change we're looking at there is instead of within existing residential would be within certain zoning districts.
That was my language.
And that'll get hashed out.
Well, we have an.
I'm, I'm seeing if that's.
Yeah, we, I, I, we have an amendment on the table.
Yeah, sure. I just don't know if we.
We have an amendment on the table.
I don't know if we had a real clarity on what that amendment was.
I mean, if, if that's how you want me to wordsmith it, I'd more than welcome to do that. Um, it, it's my, my angst with this is this is the foundation.
It is.
Our U D C is the foundation for our zoning. We are going to take the single largest zoned situation in our city, area in our city, and we're going to alter it if we go down with this the way it is because it's state. Existing. So if you want to say in certain zoned areas, you know, whatever that might be, I'm, I'm fine with, with that because it needs to be narrowed.
And it'll get further narrowed, further defined and hashed out in the U D C rewrite as we dive into that. Like you said, any hours of discussion. And it should be. I think it's a weighty issue. Um, I, I don't, I, that's where we agree. It's a weighted issue. I just, uh, I'm not sure how cut and dry it's going to be when it's all said. So that's the only.
So I think if we get a little clarification on that amendment and then six point three, I think it was, was mentioned as well. I think it was six, five was mentioned, but I think you meant six, three.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think that clarification on six two gives direction. Darren, we have a motion and a second.
Just for the record, if, if we could, uh, get Councilmember Coza to clarify that motion. And then I believe it was seconded by Councilmember Patel. And if we could, uh, have a restated motion and then a second, uh, if, if there's concurrence and then we can proceed from there.
Okay. So I'd like to make amendment to the comprehensive plan in changing the A D U guidelines or requirements, whatever you want to call it, into certain zoned areas.
That would be a change to section six point two.
That is correct. Uh, and six point three because it has it, uh, tailing in about accessory dwelling units. On lots with single family homes. So six point two and six point three.
So to clarify, the motion is to make a change to section six point two and section six point three to remove the references to existing residential to reflect certain zoned areas.
I'm moved.
So we have a motion and a second on the table. Any other disque- uh, any other questions or concerns or comments on the motion to amend? Seeing none. Uh, Madam Secretary, we're going to vote on that motion to amend.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavadia?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
So now we have an amended motion on the table. Any other questions, comments? I can make a comment. Now the A D Us are off. Um, uh, this has been a two-year process. So thank you, staff. Uh, Martin and Vance, I know you dealt with a lot of us up here recently, but a lot of meetings. Um, and th- this is a, a huge plan that will, will affect the city going forward. And, um, so I didn't want the, the A D U topic to, to monopolize the whole thing. Um, so thank you all for that. The, the final question I had, there's a couple of references to Brian's Midtown Pattern Zoning. Um, in several places, I guess if y'all could talk a little bit on why, why we're in love with Brian's Midtown Pattern Zoning as a, as a reference. At six, five. I don't know if somebody from Timely Horns here, if they want to opine on that.
Right. So, uh, the city of Brian actually won, uh, some awards for es- essentially establishing uh, what their desired character was going to be. And, uh, in order to do that, they provided a pattern book, uh, which basically said, if you come in and build this, then you've got an easier path forward because it's already pre-approved. And that was just an idea because it, it pre-pandemic, uh, it had, uh, gained some notoriety, uh, amongst the, uh, planning types throughout the state. Uh, and I believe it may have also risen up to, uh, some national recognition. But it was a unique, uh, program and a unique idea, uh, and that's how it ended up in the comprehensive plan.
So Martin, to clarify, um, what this has got in here as a recommendation is to, um, basically use um, as theirs as a reference, but we would establish our own, uh, pre-approved patterns as part of the U D C process.
Correct. And, and six, five is really just saying to, uh, potentially look into that as an available opportunity, not necessarily go down it, uh, and, you know, establish our own pattern.
Okay. I saw that throughout and I don't know if, if you've got that plan you could send out between the first and second reading, um, just so we can brush up on it. Again, thank, thanks staff for working through this. Any other questions, comments?
Um, yeah, and, uh, I'll borrow some language from Member Come On. I may be on an island here as well, but the weightiness of this document and it, and it being a, a guiding document for vision, there was another area that I wanted to bring up and discuss. Um, it's page one forty-five of the comp plan. It's page ninety-four in our packet. Um, I was asked multiple times, um, during the campaign running for city council, my perspective on public transit and busing and things of that nature in our city. And to the person that brought that up to me, every single person I talked to in the city had no interest in a busing system, a metro system, a park and ride system, a public transportation system in our community. Um, uh, nor do I personally. I don't think that fits the characteristic of our city. Uh, we, we continually hear people talk about wanting to maintain a small town feel, uh, even though we're a large town and, and having municipal buses running up and down the road, uh, certainly doesn't lend itself to that. Um, so I, I didn't know if, if anyone was willing to have some discussion on removing the references to metro and public transit in general, or if I'm misunderstanding what I'm reading here, but this seems to direct down that road.
Are you referencing nine point one two on that sheet?
Uh, nine point two zero and nine point two one.
Nine point two zero.
Our right side, bottom right column. Met, work with metro regional partners, elected and appointed officials and stakeholders to encourage dialogue about future transit, greater Houston region expanding. And it says, example, express bu- buses to suburban communities. And then.
Sure. So maybe I'll start with nine point one two, which is referencing the H G A C, uh, Transit Needs Assessment. That's, that's ongoing, should be wrapped up here in the next month or so, hopefully, if we can get H G A C to the finish line. And, uh, what we've seen, uh, from the public input through that process is, as you stated, there is no desire for any type of in, in, intra-city bus, uh, system. Um, there is some interest, uh, in, in potential park and rides. And then, um, you know, paratransit and possible, possibly microtransit, which is really just, uh, we, we already have something akin to that that's for, uh, people that qualify for, uh, disabled, um, folks and, and, and people that qualify from an age standpoint. So, um, that's really the only, the areas that, that that plan really kind of focuses in on of identifying some of those needs. Um, you know, I think looking at the, the nine point two, uh, I think that's just being part of the conversation long-term with the, the region that if there is light rail that extends from Fannin South on the cur- all, all along the Kirby Corridor, which Houston has designated that as a, as a, uh, transit corridor. Um, that we understand that, we know that and, and how that may impact us in the future and, and how that may benefit us in the future as well. Um, and, and kind of the same thing on the, the transit, the nine point two one is just if there, if there is a desire for that type of, um, park and ride to connect to the, the Texas Medical Center, um, as well as the S- Fannin South or downtown that, um, you know, that we explore what those partnerships are. But I think, you know, while these are here, I think the more, uh, pertinent recommendations on what we potentially pursue would come out of the, uh, Transit Needs Assessment that we're working on with H J C. That'll wrap up later this summer, hopefully, and we'll have that back in front of you to present those findings. And then it would be, you know, um, from that point, we would get input on what we would potentially move forward with and not move forward with.
So you don't feel there's a need, uh, so we agree there is a, there is not an appetite for buses in our community, but you don't feel that's, there's a need for that to be documented in the comp plan? That will likely come up in the transit plan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And, and to echo, I, I, you know, having it on the edge, like you said, if it's part of Kirby, something right on the edge with, uh, with some kind of a service going into Houston, whether it's bus or rail at some point in the future would be one thing. Uh, but having it traversing through the city is, is something totally different. Um, and then I agree, I think what I have heard from people is microtransit. That's what it's called, microtransit. Somebody needs service to go directly to the med center because they can't drive or they're, they're not able to, to get there. Um, and, and, and those services in that, in that needs assessment have, have borne out that people are up into that. You know, but it's more personalized. It's almost like Uber. Yeah, it, yeah, it's almost like, but having a fix, and I think what, what Trent's talking about is a fixed route. Some type of a fixed route. You pick up here and you get dropped off there, you know, within our city as well as external to our city. Uh, the only place I would like, again, I would make sure that we want to, want to be careful with is if there's something on the edge of our city. You know, right at the Beltway, moving north, I could, I could see us, you know, doing that or having a part of that or, but it, but, but not coming all the way in.
Right, right.
Not coming all the way into town. So I, I think what this does is it gives us that coverage to, for that. But at the same time, it's going to be in the needs assessment that's going to come up with what it is that we're going to ask in the future, see in the future, something like that. Any other questions, comments, Ms. Chavaria?
Thank you, Mayor. So just for clarification, um, you had mentioned that the hotel conference was removed from the plan, but on slide four nineteen, it's still listed. Under land use P P six point two.
And Member Chavaria on that, if, we'll go back and we can have it removed.
Thank you.
There's not supposed to be any in there.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. Seeing none, we have an amended motion on the table, uh, and we've discussed. So we're going to move forward with the vote. Uh, Madam Secretary, I'm going to call for the vote on that amended motion.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavadia?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. That will move forward to item number five. Uh, Mr. Tuman, would you present that, please?
Certainly, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading of ordinance number one, six, three, one dash two. So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of our annual budgeting process, we have two planned for budget amendments each fiscal year. Uh, Budget Amendment One, which we do in the fall, uh, shortly after passing the budget, handles our carryovers and, uh, has, was completed, uh, this, uh, late, late in, um, calendar year twenty twenty-three. Uh, Budget Amendment Two, which is before you tonight, incorporates any changes to revenues and expenditures and projects those, uh, revenues and expenditures through the end of this fiscal year in September. So it really establishes a starting point for our F Y twenty-five budget. So I'm going to hand over now to our budget officer, Ms. Rachel Winslow, for a brief, brief presentation on Budget Amendment Number Two. Thank you.
Thank you. So tonight we're going to talk about our changes to the general fund, the debt service fund, our enterprise operating fund, some other fund changes, and then review those future dates. So in general fund, we're seeing a number of revenue increases, including property tax collections, which increased four point four percent or one point seven million, which reflects the adopted O and M tax rate of thirty-three cents. Our interest earnings also increased fifty-three percent and then franchise fees are increasing with projections an additional two point eight percent. Additional general fund revenue changes include decreases to our sales and use taxes, which are decreasing four point one percent or one point three million. Uh, licenses and permits, our charges for services and our miscellaneous revenue, uh, which includes revenue for reimbursement from P cards as well as the cell phone towers, as well as a correction to a public safety line where every expense was entered as a revenue. Our general fund expenditure changes include an increase to salaries and benefits. Our General Fund expenditure changes include an increase to salaries and benefits of 2.1%, primarily attributable to public safety overtime and offset by decreases to the miscellaneous services category, which includes professional contractual services, printing, professional development, communications and utilities. This decrease is a blend of utility savings and savings on professional services and developments across the General Fund. Ultimately, through Budget Amendment Number Two, the General Fund will exceed the policy minimum of 90 days by $41,611. Revenue is growing from Budget Amendment Number One and expenses are seeing operational decreases as well as increases reflected in overtime costs. The Debt Service Fund changes for fiscal year 24 include revenue increases to the miscellaneous and DAP reimbursements, as well as interest earnings, which we continue to monitor year over year. Revenue decreases include our property tax collections decreasing 2.5%. This reflects the adopted debt service rate of 3229. Our transfers in decreased 98% and this reflects the reduction from the Enterprise Fund for the MUD reimbursements for both fiscal year 23 and 24. Expenditure changes include decreases or increases related to the debt defeesance. This updates to reflect the actual debt defeesance costs in fiscal year 24, and it is also reflective of the additional revenue. Our expenditure decreases include the MUD rebates, which decreased over 100% because that does recognize what we receive back for fiscal year 23 and the reduction we expect to pay in fiscal year 24. The Debt Service Income Statement reflects that we are currently $2.4 million over fund policy minimum. So any overages will be used to help mitigate the debt service rate in the coming fiscal year. For Enterprise Fund, there are a number of revenue increases related to charges for services, water and wastewater, as well as late payment increases and interest earning increases. There are no revenue decreases forecasted for the Enterprise Fund. These increases in revenue reflect increased usage over the past period, including the late fees. Enterprise Fund expenditure changes include increases to water meter sales and maintenance. This is primarily a pass-through charge, so you'll see additional revenue associated with this. Credit card fee charges, which again reflects the increased purchase of water and the purchases of water for FM 521 and Alice Street. There are additional costs related with distribution and collections, professional contractual services related to necessary repairs. And as the surface water plant comes into operation as managed by the city, we're now budgeting for the utility costs there. The Enterprise Operating Decreases include salary and wages decreasing by 9% due to staffing vacancies, as well as transfers out decreasing again to reflect those MUD rebate payments, as well as water production, professional contractual services. This is partially utilities there and parts and supplies chemicals, which reflect the reduced operating period of the surface water plant in fiscal year 24. The Enterprise Income Statement reflects that we are currently over policy minimums. Any excess over policy minimums in fiscal year 25 will be used to help mitigate any potential rate changes. Appropriations and other funds include appropriations through the Facility Fund to cash fund the Fire Station Five HVAC replacement for $130,000 and the Street Rehabilitation Program, which is funded for $3 million in fiscal year 24 through our debt sale. Our future dates for the budget include the second reading of this budget amendment on July 8th, the proposed budget submission on August 7th, the three potential budget discussions, and then the first reading of, on September 9th, and the second reading again on September 2024. Thank you.
Back to you, Mayor, for any councils or questions.
All right. Good thing. Open it up for questions, comments from council?
All right.
Thank you so much for the presentation. So the OT expenditures, is that due to positions that have not been filled that are open on, on, for the Public Safety Department?
So that's a piece of it. There's other factors and maybe we could have each of our chiefs weigh in because it's partially, it's mostly public safety and it's partially fire, partially PD, but they can give some additional details on what's impacting that. Maybe Chief Taylor can go first and then Chief Spires?
Absolutely. Thank you. Member Chaviria, that's a great question. And yes, that is a component of that. As you know, in the Fire Department, we have 42 minimum staffing each day with some additions over the last couple of years. We now have 46 staffed on each shift. We allow five off per shift for city accrued benefits. So we know every day we're going to be wanting the overtime department, you know, moving into overtime with that. Now, what we can account for is what we've experienced this year, which is a high number of long-term injuries, military leave, FMLA leave, 12-week leave for maternity, paternity for new babies that have been born. So there's a lot of that that we haven't been able to project that we've really experienced this year. With the additions we've had from our, our staffing increases, it is making a tremendous effect because it would be an additional $4,000 every day if we didn't have those new staff onboard. This is in addition to that. We've also had nine to 15 vacancies with those different parameters I spoke about, as well as vacancies, people that have, that have left the department. So all that in combination, we've had nine to 15 people at any given time that are banking on our respective shifts. That's been the challenge for us in this, this fiscal year. And thank you, Council. I'm blaming all this on Chief Randles. I'm going to make him explain some of it.
So first off, I kind of wanted to point out that overall, our spending is actually fairly on track for what it's been the last two fiscal years. However, as y'all know, we have been kind of operating a little lean. Currently, we've got about 10% of our positions are unrealized and that's probably having a major impact on the overtime budget this year. In times past, we could use unused salaries to cover that. And what that basically means is, for example, we've got, I think right now we're at nine personnel that we've hired as cadets. And so while we are paying them out of our normal salaries, they're not actually able to go out and work the streets, right? They're in some level of education and training. All toll, we've got about 14% of our total staff right now. Four police officers are unrealized or on some sort of extended leave. We're also being kind of plagued with a lot of long leave, FMLA, pregnancy leave, those sorts of things. In CID, we've had some major investigations this year, three different homicides that have taken a lot of hours outside of the, the normal work hours. The Cole shooting was a significant impact on overtime. We've also had two major organized crime investigations that we've done. One was on stolen vehicles, another one on burglaries. The good thing is I can tell you on the stolen vehicles, that was solved. The Coles was solved, the one involving the seven-year-old was solved and we're still actually working the 288 and the burglary rings. We've also been hit with some new legislative training this year that unfortunately, we had already trained on as a department, but the law said that we had to do it again. So we have had to run everybody through this additional 16 hours of training. And obviously, that has an impact on the operations side. Our animal control, we've pretty much been at a 75% allocated staffing. So they have been short for almost the entire last year. We get people in and unfortunately, the turnover is very high in that particular area. And then really the last one where we're seeing it is in dispatch. And as y'all know from the staffing study, or according to the NINA standards, we're just pretty short there. And so we're having to try to cover some of that via overtime. They've also had a couple extended leaves there, but we're waiting on that study to come back and give a recommendation to the city.
So want to thank the chiefs for giving you some more detail on that and then also let you know from a standpoint, looking at next year's budget, we're doing a little bit deeper dive on, you know, some, some of these causes and some, maybe what some of the potential solutions are to, to keep that within the parameters we'd like to moving forward.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, if you will. Trent, I will tell you, at least for me, I know I got the glimpse today from the chiefs and I appreciate it. I know we're going to go through the budget season and, you know, I've already received some calls about salary packages. What I would like to ask, if there's an appetite on this council, is to let each department come and present their budget and their needs so we get an in-depth understanding. I know Trent is the gatekeeper, but I think it's important for this council to be able to hear from each department heads, the issues they're facing before we get the budget. So we know when you decide, hey, I don't want the rate to increase, what the needs are. And, and what I'm hearing is, and I heard about this animal control, for example, that our officers were out there cleaning the kennels. If you think about it, that's a very expensive animal control. But if I am sitting on this budget, before we decide, hey, we're going to not raise the budget or the rate has to be this, get a true understanding of what the challenges are. And I would like to, if, if there is an appetite, hear from the department heads and not just from our city manager, because I think there's a raw emotion attached to what the challenges they're facing. So I will leave it to the council to think if that's a good idea or not.
So just weighing in on that real quick, we go through that process with all the department heads so that we can make a good assessment based on the strategic priorities established by the city council, what budget request and what needs rise to, to the top, so that we can present you a comprehensive budget that meets those needs. You know, once that's presented, as we discussed through it, the department heads are always here, available to answer questions, present those needs for any questions you have as, as we move through that budgeting process. So I think we provide that. We don't have all of them go up there and, and do the individual presentations. I think that's the, the hard work our budget team and our city manager's office does to present a budget that does meet your strategic priorities. And, you know, I think, you know, depending on who's presenting, they could have an undue influence on, on, you know, the, the perception of the council, just based on their, their abilities to, to, you know, present and show their particular needs versus others. And I think we've got a good handle on being able to work through what those are and what are the true priorities are based on the strategic priorities set by city council. So that's kind of my opinion on, on that, having everybody come up and do, do their own dog and pony show budget process.
Yeah, because I think the, the budget itself is a document that is presented from the city manager to the council. And, and again, if we want to ask any department head to go to the podium and ask them specific questions through the budget process, we can do that. You can do that. You have the ability to do that. You have the authority to do that. And, and so, and, and years gone by, we even asked for way previous city manager to, to give us what we call the cutting room floor. What was, what was cut that was put into individual budgets that when it came up the ladder to the CMO, what got cut, we may see things in there that we think is a priority. But at the same time, the reason we go through the strategic priority process is to have priorities as a group to pass on. I mean, if, if the council wants to have all department heads come to the podium and give us their budget, council, we can do that. But I, but I think it's a, it's a budget that's ultimately presented through a process to us as a, that meets all of our strategic priorities. And again, you want to ask the police to go to the podium and you can ask them everything about what they, what they feel like they need that's not in this budget? We can do that. At the end of the day, the only thing I caution on the fly, if you start going that road, your rate's going to go up and up and up. And eventually, we're going to get to a voter-approved rate. That's where we are. I'm not saying that we pass it. I'm not saying that. But one of the things that we tasked city manager with this year is two things. One, deliver a no new revenue rate budget. And if that's not the recommended budget, here's the recommended budget, but having a no new revenue rate, you know, budget to look at as well. Because one of the things that we've heard over the last several years is, well, I want no new revenue. We don't even know what that looks like. Because we always have, here's the budget. I want no new revenue. Well, what do we have to cut to get there? In this year's budget process, you'll be able to see how we get there. And again, it may not be the exact way. We may still massage things and do it. So again, if council wants to do that, but we have the ability to ask any department head to go to the podium, we can ask them questions about their budget at any time during the budget process. And we have all these budget discussions to go through in order to do that. We have that ability now.
Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess to, to follow up on the, the overtime for public safety, not to say that Randall's up there saying unrealized, realized, like, to me is, do we have unfilled positions that we're not able to fill, therefore we're paying overtime?
No, sir. And check and correct me if I'm wrong, but we have about 16 or 17 positions that are either in the academy, waiting to go to the academy, in the FTO program. And we're going to have a couple of openings later this month. So that's what he means by unrealized. They're filled. They're just on the street on their own yet.
I think, yeah, we, we can fill them. It's just, it's, it's a long process to get them from the point we fill them to getting them on the streets. And so as soon as we have, you know, an opportunity to fill them, we move forward with that process.
Member Carbone, as for the Fire Department, we have five openings currently. Took our written exam PAT on Saturday. Also interviewed anyone that lived further than three hours from Pearland, actually conducted interviews on Saturday, today, tomorrow, Wednesday, conducting the rest of those interviews. There is a timeframe allowed there with the, the testing, fiscal exams with the doctors in a two weeks notice. You have to allow them. We're looking at having those five in place on August 5th. So that would be the earliest we would have those in place.
All right. Thank you. And then in terms of comp, when are we going to see the Evergreen Study? Is that going to be ahead of the budget?
That's going to be on our second meeting in July, which I believe is July 22nd.
Is there any, any way to get a draft copy of that beforehand?
I think we'll be able to share something out. We'll try to get something out with a Thursday packet, a week and a half ahead of time.
All right. And then on slide 16, was that the Enterprise Fund? So we, we're going to end up with 15 and a half million over policy. That, that's a huge swing here on the, the rate side. Any ideas on what that's going to look like?
How that's going to impact the, the rate increase we looked at earlier tonight? We've got, it'll go down. So, well, I mean, we, we've got some work to do. I think, you know, we'll see it come down, you know, at, at least as much as it came down from last year's projection, which I believe is already 3%, at least that again, if not potentially more. But again, we've got to, you know, get this and all the other final pieces into the, to the rate model to, to get to those final numbers.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But yes, that's, that's a piece of that is this, this fund balance.
Potential good news. With all the caveats out there. All right. Questions, comments?
Mine is more of a question on the process based on this slide that you put up in front of us and to Member Patel's point. This is a very fast timeframe to present a budget that is massive and understand all the different departments. And I see we've got discussion one, discussion two, and potential time for a discussion three. And, and I'm also a fan of hierarchy, so I don't want to necessarily jump the city manager. But so, so it's a twofold question. One, Trent, is there anything to your mind or in our best practices that would prevent, say, me sitting down with one of the chiefs and saying, tell me about? one of the chiefs and saying, tell me about your budget, or sitting down with IT and say, tell me about your budget?
So I think, you know, as far as, um, yeah, we can have those type of discussions and, and, you know, I think we tried to do that as part, part of the council onboarding. And if there's, if there's more deeper questions, we can do that as well. Um, kinda talking towards the, the schedule as we see it here, most of that's driven by state law as to when, uh, the appraisal district give us the certified, uh, value rolls, um, and, and the time we have from getting those to being able to put a budget together. You know, one, one of the things, uh, I think that's difficult in, in, you know, having a lot of preliminary meetings beyond what we already do, cuz we, you know, we do a lot of them throughout the year, um, before we actually have those numbers is we don't know where, you know, where those values are gonna come in at, what that's gonna set the no new revenue at and the voter approve rate at, and really then how we can address the highest priority of our needs, uh, with the budget. So we, we kinda work through that and have that priority based on the council's strategic priorities, so that when we get those final numbers, we've got about less than a week or so to get those numbers crunched, um, plug a budget into that and get that budget delivered and submitted to the city council to be able to give you a few days before we have that first budget discussion. Now, in that first budget discussion, we do go into a fairly significant amount of, of detail of, um, you know, what that budget consists of, uh, any new supplemental items, any new, uh, personnel, uh, recommendations that are in there, how those meet and how those fit within the strategic priorities, um, so that, you know, we, we do a fairly deep dive on that in that first budget discussion. And then we use the next two to answer, answer questions from the first one and continue that conversation. Um, so a lot, like I said, this, the schedule's really driven by state law as to when we get those things, when we are able to put the budget together. And then, um, basically the final two items here are driven again by state law as far as when we have to have our budget public hearings, our tax rate public hearings, and, um, and then the first reading of the budget and the second reading of those. Um, those are all laid out state law, what, when we have to have those and their relationship to each other.
Okay. Um, I, obviously this will be my first time to go through the budget process, so I'm trying to think through it, being able to wrap my brain around it in a seven-day window of time. On, on this schedule, per this plan, is the idea that ideally council would be voting on the budget on the sixteenth or on the twenty-sixth?
So, yeah, the council would not vote on anything until September ninth and then September twenty-third for the second reading.
August, the whole month of August is discussion.
Okay.
And even, and even September, during those, even those first readings, you'll have discussion.
We'll, we'll still be finalizing those. And I think, you know, to put some perspective on it, although it, it is a big budget, we try to boil it down to, you know, what is, you know, our ongoing operating and operation and maintenance expenses that, that are, are based on the services we provided and, and the amount of people we do have currently, um, and then really focus in on what are the adds to that? What are the additional, uh, programs? What would be additional, um, personnel or any additional supplemental request? Um, that, that, um, you know, cost the additional dollars. And, you know, we, as we get through those discussions, traditionally it's taken, um, you know, the first two and then sometimes the third one. So I think that does allow us time, the time necessary for us to get through all those and get through all the questions and, and get to that final, final number, that council then moves forward with to approve.
If I, if I'm understanding the process in general, a- as a member of council, I have essentially the month of August to ask whatever questions I wanna ask, and, and there's, there's no particular issue with me saying wanted to sit down with a particular department and say, can you explain this or that to me if I wanted to?
Absolutely. I mean, I think we can explain those here in, in the public. If there's more explanation necessary, uh, and, and a sit down is necessary, we can do that. And, and then I do wanna point out, you know, this is kind of the, the, the final throes of everything. We do have, uh, the four, uh, CIP workshops that we do throughout the year. So tonight you saw that was focused on the CIP budget for this year. The other three, we do focus on two areas of the CIP budget in each of those. So one of them will focus on water and wastewater, one will focus on streets and sidewalks and drainage, and the other will focus on facilities and parks. And in those, we're able to do some deeper dive into the operational, uh, operational cost and the operations of those different departments and how they support. Um, you know, as we complete these additional capital projects, how they support that and how they operate themselves, um, for everything they're responsible for. Um, and then, you know, we have, we do have other items that come up and other discussion items that are other departments where we're able to, you know, talk about those things as well throughout the year. Of course, you know, it really starts with the strategic planning session we do in February. Um, and then, of course, the early budget input session, which we had, um, I believe in April of this year. So I think those are all, you know, the, the different pieces of where we gather that input, establishing the city council's strategic priorities, the milestones, um, at, at the strategic, uh, planning session, and then sitting down in that early budget input session to say, hey, here's what we've heard from you, here's what we're thinking of and looking at as we move forward. Are we missing anything? So I think there's, there's a lot of, uh, or I know that there's a lot of checkpoints throughout the entire year, not just crunched all into August and, and, and September for, for that council input as well.
It's a, I was gonna say, welcome to budget time. It's a, it's a fast-paced, uh, you know, moment, and you'll live, sleep and, you know, eat budget for a month and, or a month and, or about six or seven weeks as you go through it, uh, but it, we'll get through it nonetheless. Last call, questions, comments? Didn't see anymore. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavadia?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Aye.
Member Kate?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Tell, if you would present item six, please.
Sorry, uh, considering possible action resolution number R two zero two four dash one one nine, so moved?
Second. Motion of second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to renew our, uh, medical dental vision, life and disability insurance for our employees. Um, it's basically the same benefits package we've seen in the past few years, um, with very minor tweak in, in dental. Um, but, and, and what the results of going through this process this year is we've got a, an operating expense increase we're looking at next year of about four point one. That requires about a two point five percent increase in contributions from our employees. So, you know, i- if you, if you see the news and hear about the, the cost of medical, uh, expenditures always, um, going up, up, up. Um, I think we've had, we've had several good years where we're, you know, we're kinda holding the line on that as best we can and, and really coming in under what most folks are seeing from an inflation standpoint in those arenas. So the, uh, plan, we do maintain our target fund balance. Our target fund balance is between twenty-five and thirty-five percent. Um, we're at twenty-six point one. Um, so, uh, with that, uh, we do recommend renewal of our employee health insurance benefits and would be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
All right. Any, uh, questions, comments from council?
Thank you for sending this out ahead of time. A lot of good info. I, I guess the, the one thing you mentioned jumps out is, um, it didn't get move, or that moved significantly was dental. Um, so we're raising the rate, what, twenty-five percent? And cutting the benefits package, or cutting the benefits?
That's correct. Is that correct on the, the numbers?
That is correct. The initial renewal that came in was twenty-eight point something percent. And to be able to keep it relatively small, we evaluated additional options such as decreasing the annual minimum maximum to two thousand. There were twenty employees of the four hundred and ninety-something that are on that plan that had gone over two thousand dollars in usage. So to bring the actual amount of the premium down to twenty-four percent, we elected to go with the two thousand maximum annual, uh, amount.
That affects, you said twenty?
Twenty people used that amount last year.
Very good. Thank you.
Questions, guys? Actually, we had a good renewal year overall, so very, very pleased with that. Questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavadia?
Aye.
Member Byram?
Stepped out.
Member Kate?
Aye.
Member Tuman?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right. Back to you, Mr. Coza.
Yes, Mayor. Consideration in possible action, resolution number R two zero two four dash nine-nine, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. This item awards the first guaranteed maximum price on the Berry Rose Longwood wastewater plant project. Uh, the scope of that project is to reconstruct the Berry Rose plant, uh, which was built in the sixties, and then also, uh, convert the Longwood plant, also built in the sixties, to a, a regional lift station to pump those wastewater flows over to the Berry Rose plant. Um, this will be the largest, uh, city capital project to date, and, um, we're here tonight to, to present and, and deliver the first, uh, or the first guaranteed maximum price. Uh, the first GMP is for long lead time equipment. It's for site work, underground and foundational work. Uh, we expect to come back to you in January with GMP number two, uh, which will be for the balance of the plant and the Longwood lift station. And then finally with the guaranteed maximum price number three, the final one, um, for the force main work that connects Longwood to the Berry Rose site is expected in July of, uh, twenty twenty-five. A- and, uh, you know, working with, uh, McCarthy, our, our construction manager at risk, um, we have, uh, you know, they, the current estimates indicate that we will be within the construction budget for the entire project, uh, all three GMPs. Um, so, uh, therefore we recommend award of GMP number one to McCarthy Building Companies in the amount of sixty-six million, five hundred and seventy thousand, nineteen dollars. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. We'll open it up for, uh, questions, comments from council. Coza?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Trent, you and I have had this conversation, but I'd just like to get it on the record. Um, our, our good friends at Freezing Nichols, uh, were in regards to, uh, this, uh, project right here, correct?
Uh, they are the design engineer for this project. So we have the design engineer. We have our owner's rep that is helping us, uh, manage the overall project, which is our Dura. And then McCarthy is the construction manager at risk. So that's the team.
And, uh, as far as we know, we're, we're good on all of our numbers?
Uh, yes, sir. So the, this construction manager at risk process is that we bring on the construction manager in the early design of the project. They then work alongside our design team as well as our owner's rep and, and our team, uh, our internal team, uh, to, um, look at the design as we go through that. So the, the designer or the builder can have comments and of, of how to build something better, how to build something more cost effectively, uh, different materials, things like that, and also look at the plans from a constructability standpoint. Um, therefore, as we go into the guaranteed maximum price, um, they, you know, if there's any issues with the plans at that point, it's, it's covered under the GMP.
All right. Thank you. I also see Skipper Jones out there in the, in the audience and, uh, have full faith in him. He did a good job when he worked for the city, so thank you for coming out.
All right. Questions, comments? Airport Tim?
Um, based on some conversations earlier, what kind of light bulbs we use in this place? Are we going Cisco switch powered POE Cadillac lights? Joking but not joking, so.
Um, I'm not sure.
Yeah, Skipper, you got any ideas?
We're, we're gonna make the best use of the, of the highest technology we can where it makes sense. Uh, I don't believe we have any POE lighting in this project.
And one thing to note, really, there's only maybe one structure or two that, that may really require lighting. Um, that's gonna be the lab building and then probably some of the mechanical, uh, smaller mechanical buildings. And you may have very limited, uh, internet access. The, the internet access is primarily gonna be in that small, um, lab facility.
All right. Well, I'll come for a tour and I'm gonna be looking at light bulbs. No, I, the, the, the technology's awesome. It's just expensive as can be. And, um, anyway, thank you for, uh, being on the job, Skipper.
My pleasure.
All right. Questions? Mr. Tunnin?
So, this is the, the biggest project, CIP project that we're doing, and we're deciding to do it during the largest, um, interest rates within, let's just say, the last ten years. And so I was a little scared earlier, if you can bring that, uh, slide forty from our workshop up that asked, we could bring that back during our regular meeting.
Maybe while he's getting that pulled up, you know, from a standpoint of the cost of borrowing are higher now than we've seen, uh, in many years. At the same time, we've seen a lot of inflation that's, you know, uh, probably outpaced that to some extent. So, you know, there's a balance there, um, and that inflation, you know, we'll continue to see that, um, from what we've heard on, on equipment and things. Um, and then, of course, our borrowing cost, if we do see opportunities down the road where interest rates do decline, uh, we do have the oper- op- opportunity to, um, refinance those when, when appropriate and meet the met, the metrics that we typically use to determine whether it makes sense to, to refinance, uh, the debt. And, and we'll bring those forward as, as, uh, as those opportunities occur, but.
I'm just gonna say that my frustration here is, you know, i- in our Friday conversation, I know it was super brief, um, but I think my question was, you know, can, can this be put off? Well, the answer was no, it's old, it's, this thing is coming apart. And the responsible thing here to do is to do this, is to just go ahead and rip the Band-Aid off and, and take care of it. It's been pushed down the road and, and now we're here. The frustrating part is it's here while I'm here. And so I'm looking at this and, and I'm kinda interpolating this. Okay, so if I'm looking at this and I understand what it says, but if I'm looking at water and sewer charges, and I interpolate this to if my monthly bill is seventy-two dollars, one hundred and twenty-one and sixty-three cents in twenty twenty-eight, that same bill will now cost me a hundred and fifteen dollars, nine forty-nine and eighty-five cents. Is that correct? Because I see the fourteen, the fourteen, the fourteen and eleven, and I understand the way compound interest works. But my bill at home is not seventy-two dollars cuz I'm a family of five. My bill's closer to a hundred and fifty dollars, which would push, which according to these numbers, if I'm interpolating right, that's gonna make my bill go up one hundred dollars in, in four years. And when I saw this earlier, it really scares me. It's a lot. A hundred dollars in four years for a hundred and fifty dollar bill.
So I'd like to do the math. I'm not gonna do dyast math, so, um, I'll, uh, you know, we can kinda come back with what that looks like. Um, I don't know if Rachel's still here.
I, I, I mean, Trent, if you want, I, I can speak to that.
Absolutely.
The, the math is correct. That is right. That is what we're looking at.
So I think to kinda put that in perspective, you know, we've, we've had the JHEC wastewater treatment plant, um, reconstruction project. That was ninety-five million dollars. It's wrapping up, um, you know, this, this summer. And then we've had the, uh, surface water treatment plant, a hundred and seventy-five million dollars. It's wrapping up this summer. And now, you know, the Berry Rose project. So, you know, it's a combination of those things driving these rates. And, you know, as we talked about earlier, uh, we'll look at this annually, see where revenues are, um, see how much debt we actually do have to sell to complete this project and, and modify these as, as we have to. But I think, you know, from a standpoint, if you, if you look around the country, water and sewer, we're all struggling with this. We see, uh, City of Houston adopting multi-year, ten, ten percent plus, uh, rate increases. Um, a lot of our neighbors have, you know, uh, adopted multi-year, multi, um, you know, double-digit rate increases. So, um, we're, we're not unique in that respect. Um, everybody's seeing the impacts of, of the cost of building and maintaining.
Yeah, I, I completely understand where we are and why we're here and, and what the responsible thing to do here is. And, and the, the thing about it is, is in. And, and the, the thing about it is, is in, like I said, I'm frustrated because, you know, if I say no to this, then we're gonna have residents that their toilets aren't gonna flush. And then, you know, are they gonna be more upset because their bill is higher? Or are they gonna be more upset because their toilets don't flush? And it's, like I said, it's just very frustrating, frustrating, and it scares me looking at these numbers. And so it basically broke down to, I feel like I'm forced to vote for this. And I, I don't know, this, this scared me earlier when I saw it. I, I wanted to take a little more time to just kinda go over it and go over it in my head. And that's why I asked to just wait until this time to bring it up. And, and this is why.
You know, we're gonna have people unhappy if their bills go up. We're gonna have people unhappy if, if we have issues with the system where they don't flush and it goes away, or they turn the water on, it doesn't come on. So I think it's, in, in that case, you know, we're not gonna make people happy with either of those. So we have to make the right decision and the best decision for the long term.
Sure. I mean, when your water bill goes from a hundred and fifty to two fifty and it's more than your power bill, that's, that's tough.
Victor, tell, tell the council what happened with the EPA and the system in Baytown while you were there.
So not wishing to betray any confidences, but it's mostly in the public domain. The EPA and the DOJ entered into a negotiation with the city of Baytown, as they did with the city of Houston.
And real quick, these were because they delayed projects?
Because they delayed projects over a period of ten to fifteen years. We had issues with sanitary sewer overflows and the bill came to about seven hundred million dollars. And our option was to do it or to not do it, and they would fine us and still make us do it.
Right. That, that, and, 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 Mr. Tuman, I, you're not suggesting we don't do it, and I, and I hear that. But that's the, that's the rub that we're grappling with is if the longer we put this off, even with inflation that's going up, we might wait for a better interest rate. But at what cost on the project going, oh, oh, you know, doing that? At the same time, the next time Clear Creek overflows, EPA, T C Q, and everybody else is down our throat because we have overflows, you know, in the creek. Because it's sitting, literally, it's sitting, I'm not gonna say it's sitting in the creek, but it's sitting in the floodway. So that's, that's the problem that we've got. And we've been managing the other project along with this one. Should we have reversed them and done the sewer first and the water second? I mean, you could make a case for that, could've gone the other way. But we still would've had a half a billion plus in capital improvement at impacting rates just like this. I go back to one of the previous slides that's in this, and that's the zero percents for seven years over, you know, out of ten or eleven years. And had there been some modest increases in banking this, we wouldn't be seeing fourteen, fourteen and, and those, those, they might be single digits, but they might still be high single digits, but they wouldn't be thirteen and fourteen and fifteen percent. And so that's where, and again, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna cast dispersion on a previous councils. They were operating under the information that they knew best. We now have better information. So we, we need to make sure whatever decision we do here and moving forward, that we make sure that we make good financial policy and decisions so we, you know, other councils, even twenty years from now, can, can have that and, and glean from it and, and make good decisions along the way. So.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing that you might wanna read a little bit about, remember, Tuman, is Jackson, Mississippi. And they're a city of about a hundred and fifty thousand people, just marginally bigger than we are. They have put their water facilities off. And currently, the estimates right now are one billion dollars for them to correct their issues. And they're constantly having boil bans and, and water issues within the city. So I know you said, you know, you feel like you're forced to, but I mean, if you wanna read some real nightmares, read about Jackson, Mississippi's water.
I can, I can agree with that, but I can also show you many, many cities that aren't in this predicament. And, and I'm not casting blame on anybody up here. I, I, I stated the responsible thing to do is to just go ahead and take this thing on. And my frustration is yes, because, because there's, that's, that's the right choice. But again, I'm frustrated that I, I'm here and I have to do this. And, but the, the main thing is we have a four-year forecast. And in that four-year forecast, we have the opportunity to trim those numbers, whether we're changing light bulbs. And if it's that bad, we need to look at the light bulbs because those numbers are not acceptable. There's, and, and typically, when we get into a set of numbers, a forecasted set of numbers, and I know they're supposedly the worst, sometimes they go the other way. And I, I, I don't want to see those numbers happen. And I know, I know there's a large amount that can't be changed, I know. But that needs to be trimmed and it needs to be worked on, whether it's with the, in the design build with the architect and then in the design, which where we're at right now, there, there needs to be some cost design here. This, this is not acceptable.
So, you know, the C M R process is set up to do that throughout the design, is to evaluate, you know, what's being designed from a cost standpoint, make recommendations on how to make that more cost effective, and then, and go through a value engineering process and go through a scoping process. So, you know, there, there are things that at this point aren't built into here, like a second belt press, which, you know, a, a plant of this size, you would ideally have two belt presses. Something on the back end, as we get to GMP number three, we'll look at the final numbers and, and, and decide whether we can, we can afford that at that point because it's, it's, it's an operational risk and it's an operational, you know, inefficiency to not do that. But we have, you know, we've looked at things like that where you can impact this budget. And, you know, we'll continue to as we move towards GMP number two and three. That's the, the, you know, the essence of the construction manager at risk delivery model. So, you know, I feel like we've, we've got a good tight budget on a, on a good tight design.
I'm, I'm not trying to kill a dead horse. But I guess the question would be, you're spending quarter for a billion dollars. What's the useful life of this? Is this gonna be another sixty years, fifty years? Is somebody from Freezing Nichols here? Can you get to a podium? In your, in your experience here, what is the life use of this facility that we're building?
Yeah, so this is David Munn with Freezing Nichols. You've got different types of assets within the facility. Your concrete structural assets are easily gonna have a fifty-year-plus life. Some of your process mechanical, electrical is gonna have on average twenty, twenty-five years or so. So it does depend on the asset.
Would it be fair to say we're investing about two and a half million a year for the next fifty years?
I, I, I'm not gonna do the math in my head. I'll get myself in trouble.
No problem. But, but I guess the point is, I do hear you, Councilman Truman. It is a big number and I also struggle with it. Coming from a business side, believe me, I'll pay the hundred dollars, then the thousand dollars that we're about to get hit. A lot of the schools and all of those guys are gonna suffer. My point is that it does suck to sit here. It does. But unfortunately, I'm not an engineer. So I, I'm hoping that the city and the engineers have designed this thing as best as possible. And unfortunately, you don't have but two choices, yes or no. That's all you have at this point. So it's a, it's a struggle, but unfortunately, my point is this is a long, long-term investment. It's gonna be here hopefully after we're gone, so.
And to, back to your point, Mr. Patel, is, you know, once, once it's built, longevity is really depending, depending on ongoing maintenance and proper maintenance of the facility and not getting into, into deferred maintenance any further. Just, you know, we, we might, we might lower a rate one percent, save X, but what does it cost in the longevity of a, of a, of a facility down the, down the line? Those are after the fact. That's after it's up and running. Those are those types of decisions that have to be made along the way as well. And so it, the, none of these decisions are easy. They're weighty, they're heavy, they're big numbers, they're scary numbers. But in, in the end of the day, they are what they are. The numbers are what they are. Your point, value engineering and looking at every nickel and dime throughout the process is, is important because those nickel and dimes add up to big dollars, to millions of dollars and ultimately savings. So are you gonna weigh in?
Yep. It is, it's never fun to spend two hundred and seventy million dollars, especially when it's taxpayer money. Remember, Tuman, I will tell you, I, I hundred percent agree with you. I think we need to be very diligent when we start looking at the water rates that we set. And they need to be very cognizant of the impact that they have on the citizens of our community. But they also need to be reasonable to make sure we set ourselves up for success in the future. I think fourteen percent is, is a hard pill to swallow as well across four years. But I, I'm, I'm saying that I'm with you in, well, each year. It compounds, correct? I'm with you in making sure that we, we grapple with that diligently when we get to that point. Or the C M R agreement, I, I have a struggle and I spoke with staff a little bit earlier about it and they helped me understand it. But, well, they helped me understand how we got to. I don't know that I necessarily understand it or agree with it. And maybe you guys can help shed some light on it for me. And it's in relation to this sixty, forty proposed cost-saving share plan. As members have talked about, you know, every, every penny matters, every dollar matters. We need to be looking at every cent because this is taxpayers' money. This isn't my money. This is taxpayers' money that, that has to be paid back over time. And, and my experience, which admittedly, I've never built a wastewater treatment plant. So I understand that that's outside of my realm. I've never seen a contingency have a percentage that goes back to the contractor if he actually protects the contingency. And that, in, in my mind, and I don't, I don't know which of you guys that was standing up there that applies to. And, and I, I'll be blunt, but I don't mean to be rude. I, I feel like protecting the contingency built in is the job of the contractor. I, I don't know why on top of the six percent profit margin that's built into it, why there would need to be an incentive to encourage you guys to protect that. So if maybe you can help me with the logic behind this or how we came to offering this up as, as part of this change to the agreement, help me understand that because it, it really is a, that's a, that's a challenge for me.
Thank you. Jake Stones with McCarthy Building Companies. And so contingency sharing agreements are not something that we typically engage in or that we bring to the table, but they are common for C M R agreements. The, the industry has, has seen over the last nine years, probably sixty percent inflation escalation for construction, water infrastructure costs specifically. And so part of the C M R process always includes allowances and contingencies to cover those, to, to give cost certainty at the end of the day. When we engaged in a discussion about contingencies here, it was really to drive correct behavior, to protect that contingency and see if we could save even more dollars. When we initially budgeted this project, so in twenty twenty-three, we received the B U D R from our good partners at Freezing Nichols and that initial design, and we budgeted that, the, the number was almost two hundred and sixty million dollars of construction costs we were seeing to accomplish that. The team of good partners, Skipper, Freezing Nichols, our Dura and McCarthy engaged in a lot of value engineering, looking at every way to pull that cost down. And we got well within the budget and have continued to trend down with those value engineering, things like redesigning the foundations from auger cast piles into an X and fill, which saved almost five and a half million dollars out of that budget. So the team has done a really good collaborative job and we wanted to continue to drive that through the life of the project downwards. So the forty-sixty contingencies or shavings only became a reality when we realized that all of the contingency on the previous projects that had been built within the city of Pearland had exhausted all of the contingency. So all those water projects, if you look at the history, the contingency that was set apart in those other C M R water infrastructure projects, whether it be J HEC or what was the other one that was done?
Surface water.
Surface water. Those contingencies got completely exhausted. So the idea came, if we could try to drive that, could we drive that better behavior? And understanding that it was all exhausted in previous contracts, if we could save it, is there a way to do that? So that's the agreement. The contingency savings or, or some, the, the concept was already baked into the initial C M R agreement. There already was a, a shared savings on a risk sharing. It was a defined amount. So as the project progressed, the, the current cost-saving share plan that's in there now is a, is a version of a sixty, forty that was already in the agreement originally. It was just altered, oh, excuse me, it was altered to match the needs of this project as it progressed. That was contemplated in twenty twenty. We are twenty twenty-four, ready to start on the first GMP one. Does that answer that question? That provides some history?
It sort of. I, I, I still have the same challenge. I, I did read that there was the risk share agreement originally that was around, that was sixty, forty split on a risk share of two hundred and fifty thousand. Now we're talking about a sixty, forty split on a million or. So that's a much larger number. And, and, and again, I, I'll, I'll be blunt, but not to be rude. I appreciate the value engineering. I, I feel like that's what we're paying for. So you guys have done a great job in going from two sixty to two seventeen, I think, is about where we're at. That's fantastic. I, I just don't understand. What I heard you say is in other projects, the contingency was completely used up. So we figured if we offered an incentive to not use it, then we would get better behavior out of the contractor. And that doesn't make any sense to me. That should be the, I am a contractor and it's my job to protect my customer's budget. And I build in contingencies as well, and it's my job to not go into that contingency unless I absolutely have to because that's their money. And, and that's what, that's the struggle I have with it, is why does there need to be an incentive on top of awarding the job and, and the profit margin that's in there? And if I understand this correctly, that modifying this language tonight doesn't just modify it for GMP one, it modifies it for GMP one, two, and three. So there'd be a sixty, forty split on the contingency in all three phases of the project. And I did some, some quick math earlier. I'll, I'll do dias math because I can get in trouble and I'll have to deal with it later. But assuming that the contingency is, that, that better behavior is incentivized and the contingency is fully protected, that results in an additional two point six million dollars of taxpayer money across the three GMPs paid out to encourage the project to stay on budget. And that, those things don't marry up for me. So that, that's where I'm struggling. Did, you see where I'm coming from?
Yeah, I can, I can understand the perspective.
So overall, that, I understand the, the grapple with needing to do it. I understand we need to do it. It's not a question of whether we should do it or not. I'm just, I'm, I have consternation about that component of, of this overall agreement, why we would offer up the taxpayers' dollars to incentivize the contractor to do what, what we're paying him to do.
All of this difficult. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we need to have a larger discussion, then, you know, I could offer an amendment, amendment to the agreement to remove the sixty, forty cost share, cost-saving share.
Second.
We have an amendment on the table to remove the sixty, forty cost share. First off, I guess, start Aaron or Trent?
So maybe just a comment before we vote on that, that, you know, there was a lot that went into establishing this GMP and, and a lot of different things back and forth and kind of negotiating the final where we are today. So I think we would wanna understand, you know, is, is the C M R, you know, would they move forward with entering into a contract with us with that amendment?
I guess that's a question for you guys.
What was the question again?
So there's a motion on the table to take the risk sharing plan and making that where it's no longer cost sharing or on the, on the savings, but that all savings would come back to the city and whether if they move forward with that amendment to the award tonight, you know, that, that McCarthy would move forward with the executing the GMP one and moving forward with the project.
Yeah, and let, let me just give a little additional context into how we came to that cost, cost savings proposal. So McCarthy got involved in this project in, in 2020, and at the time, we had, we had proposed a base fee of six and a half percent for, for the project, understanding that the timeline along with which it would be built would be finished today. We would actually be starting up the plant right now and it hasn't started yet. Fast forward, and there's a lot of history there, but fast forward, McCarthy stayed engaged during the life of the project and wanting to continue to deliver this important asset to the city of Pearland. Today, and the market shifts, we went through COVID, we went through the escalation I talked about, the market has shifted significantly and C Mar agreements of similar size in Houston Metro and in Texas in general, those base fees right now are at about nine and a half at the lowest to 10 and a half and 11%. And that's, that's, uh, to be verified from all of our partners. So we've engaged that same staff through, through the life of this and taking a sign, now engaging those resources now, it's not at market prices. And so as we looked at that and negotiated with, with GMP one, part of that cost savings was rather than ask for a rate increase on that base fee to current market prices, we said, let McCarthy earn that. There was already a cost sharing component in the job. We converted that to a little bit larger portion of the, and said, hey, if McCarthy, rather than ask for a rate increase from the six, six percent, and it was initially six and a half percent, we negotiated that down to six, and part of that was the original cost sharing that was in there. That being said, the current GMP that is presented for you considered that, that not asking for a rate, a fee increase and, and allowing us to earn it by providing additional value to the city, which was a judicious use of that contingency and then making us earn that additional fee if we wanted. So that's a little, does that, does that give a little more context to how we arrived at that, at that cost sharing?
Sort of. I mean, it, it's not a, it's not a, a little different as you explain, you know, where there was an, an RSA in place and we made it a little bit different and changed it to this because on 60-40 on 250,000 is $100,000. 60-40 on a million four is a whole nother animal, right? And, and again, this is taxpayer dollars that has to be paid back on the tax rate that we have to grapple with, well, not on the tax rate, on the, on the water, water sewer rate. And so it, it's a very significant difference and 250,000 spread, you know, for three phases, that's 750, that's 300,000 versus two and a half million. It's a huge jump between the two in my mind. And again, my, my job, I understand the market changed, my world, the market changed, my price had to go up, I understand all of that. Understood. But, well, there's didn't, but they're asking for it too in a different way.
But they could have come and just asked for a fee increase. Would that be better?
Yeah, the, the current market fees now are nine and a half to 10%. The job, the fee on the job right now is 6%. So 3% on 200 million is almost $6 million additional. So we could have asked for that. We didn't. We said, make us earn it. Let us show you the value by, by giving you back some of that contingency that's budgeted in the job now. And if we're able to do that, if we're able to give those contingency savings, then we will have earned some, some of that, not all of that fee disparity, but we'll earn some of it back and we're happy to do that.
Well, and, and I appreciate the context and, and that's, that's a great point, Mr. Mayor. I mean, we have, that's why we discuss the amendment and, you know, overall, if, if, if the agreement, if the amendment fails seven to nothing, we had the conversation because I think it's important that we talk about this and, and make sure we fully understand what we're doing it, you know? And if, and if it passes, it passes. I, I just, as Member Tooman, Member Tooman said and other people have said, this is the largest undertaking we've ever taken on behalf of the city and we have massive debt that we have to undertake in considerable other areas, not just this sewer treatment plant. So every red cent matters and, and we need to grapple with that.
And I, and I appreciate that commentary and it, it, it's real. And I, the other council members that, that, that express this, that it, it is frustrating to have to be in these conversations constantly. You know, that 60% increase, we, we're having these constantly with, with our clients about, about the cost of this work and it's frustrating or sometimes sucks to be the one delivering that news, but we are working diligently to find solutions that get these within communities' budgets as we've done here. So I appreciate it and thank you for the, for the, for the commentary and the good discussion about the proposal.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Byron, I do echo your, I guess, concern, but at the same time, we put this away for four years now. And one thing I'm so scared of now is you said you're a contractor and we're, I've done a little bit of construction and I guarantee you, if you let them walk out today, the fear will be you're not going to get the same price. Second fear I have is getting equipment today, we ordered equipment back in March of 2023, our electrical gear, and it's still not here on site today. If we go back to the drawing board or renegotiate this contract, I do understand two and a half million dollars is a lot of money. But if they don't earn it, they don't get it. So your maximum out of pocket is two and a half mil. Are you willing to take the risk that they go back and give you a bid that's much higher and say, we're going to have a contingency? And all the large projects we have done, the J HAC, water treatment, all the contingency got eaten up anyway. So my point would be, I think we're at this point where we just need to make a decision and move forward. I, I hate, you're coming in late at the game and it sucks for you because I've been there. And at this point, it's yes or no. It, it really just is.
We've all been there. Understood. And if we want to shoot the amendment down, shoot it down. You know, that's, that's, that's not going to bother me at all. I just, I, I feel like we need to have that conversation. Absolutely.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the amendment passes, the deal blows up. Like, right? I mean, McCarthy-
If McCarthy doesn't agree to that, then yes, we're, you know, a C Mar contract where we are at this point is we either agree to a GMP or we walk away. We have to finish the design for everything, which won't finish until, you know, late this year, and we'll be bidding this thing out to the general market, you know, in December, February, or December, January at best.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate the discussion. I, I agree with Councilman Patel. I think we have to move forward with it. Because yeah, we'll probably blow through all the, the contingency if, if McCarthy comes back or if, if, forbid they walk, then we're trying to find a new C Mar and all that. Yeah, this, this project, I, the fact that it was supposed to be online right now and we're, we're talking about the, the first package, thanks for hanging there with us. It's been a hell of a ride and, yeah, hopefully we'll move forward.
And, and just to clarify, if we ended up there, we wouldn't be seeking a new C Mar. We'd hard bid this out as a low bidder and there's no guaranteed maximum prices in that process.
No guaranteed maximum and good luck getting material. I mean, doing this, we're ordering material along the way. We're getting early works packages out. We're getting things, you know, that, which is why, at the end of the day, Surface Water Treatment Plant came in on budget. And, and so it was, it was important to do that. We do have a, a motion to amend on the table. So any other discussion on the motion to amend? All right. Madam Secretary, we'll vote on the motion to amend.
Member Byron?
Aye.
Member Kate?
Aye.
Aye.
Member Tooman? Member Patel?
Oh.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
No.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
No.
The motion fails two to five.
All right. Do we still have the, the regular motion? Any other questions, comments? Echo every comment that's up, up here. I mean, it's tough. We walk into this and there's always tough decisions. Every single one of us, when you're newly elected, you're walking into something that you had absolutely nothing to do with and, and, and you're having to jump right into the middle of it. And so it just comes with the territory, which is why I always say, we're moving like, like, like up on a freeway that's moving at 70 miles an hour and you got to merge into traffic and get up to speed and go. But we have, we have great council members here that can do that. You have the ability to do that and we will do that. So echoing everything, McCarthy, thank you for sticking through this. One of the things that we did do for our new council members, just to make you aware, we even halted the process a little bit to make sure that what we were doing in this project was the right project. We had some alternatives, we had some other ways to look at it, and we wanted to make sure that because we're spending a quarter of a billion dollars on a, on a single project, is this the right way to do this project? Were there other savings? Were there other additional ways to do it? So we took time to look at that. And, and that was the right thing to do because again, the amount of money we were going to spend for an asset and a system that's going to be here for the next 50 or 60 plus years, we needed to make sure we were doing the right thing. That has delayed the project a little bit, but it's paid dividends because it anchored that this was the right way to do it. So last call for questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Byron?
Aye.
Member Kate?
Aye.
Member Tooman?
No.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
The motion passes six to one.
All right. With that, Ms. Chavaria, would you place number eight on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2024-121, so moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a ward of a drainage improvement project, the actual construction of it, that will upsize multiple roadside ditches and upsize existing culverts on those particular roads. Includes Scott Lane, Woody Road, Garden Road, O'Day Road, and I have Woody down twice, so I may have one other one I missed. And then these are all funded by GLO and CDBG funds, and these were bid out and then we had to go through a process of amending our, our CDBG budget to, to make up the balance of where the low bids came in. So tonight, we recommend awarding the contract to Niri Construction in the amount of $2,922,119. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Opened up for questions, comments, and concerns? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Byron?
Aye.
Member Kate?
Aye.
Member Tooman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. Carbone, would you present item nine, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution R 2024-118, so moved.
Motion and a second. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the award of a unit supply contract for debris monitoring services with Tetra Tech. So this will be used in the event of debris removal in a, in a disaster. If it is declared disaster, will be reimbursable by FEMA, a, a large percentage of these, depending on the, the disaster itself and, and what they reimburse. These services are required to be coupled along with our debris management or our debris removal company that we awarded the primary contract to Seres at our last meeting. So what Tetra Tech does is they monitor the removal of that debris, they count the debris, the amounts, and that documentation is required by FEMA for the reimbursement. So we award this in the estimated amount of $500,000, but we will not spend a penny on this unless we go into a situation where we're actually moving, removing debris. So with that, we recommend the award to Tetra Tech. We have worked with them in the past and they, they, they did good work for us, I believe it was in Hurricane Harvey for our debris removal. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you for that. Any comments or questions from council?
Sorry, real quick. Trent, I'm getting old. I'm almost 50. So remind me, didn't we vote on some other debris removal contract? What was the difference between that and this?
Yes, sir. So at the last meeting, we voted on debris management contract. So that is the company that actually removes the debris. And then this company is the company that monitors that debris removal, counts how much debris is removed, documents it all in the fashion that FEMA requires it to be documented so that we can get reimbursed on both of those contracts. And then just as a preview for the next contract or the next item on your agenda, we have a backup or secondary debris management contract in case the first one is unable to perform or we have such a widespread disaster that we need two debris removal companies. So Tetra Tech will do the monitoring for all the debris removal. We awarded last meeting, the management company or the primary management removal of the debris itself to Seres, and then we've got the next item to Crowder Gulf as a backup to that. So that's kind of the full picture on debris removal. Yes, sir.
Yep. Ultimately, it's all reimbursable through even the federal government, if we, if we deploy it.
It, it is, as long as there's, I believe, a declared disaster and then it's a percentage usually, and sometimes it's 100% and sometimes it's 90%, but I believe at least 90%, Joel.
So the general rule of thumb is 75% actually, but the, the declaration at the White House level and the state sometimes comes in with a match. So with Harvey, we got 100% of our debris costs reimbursed.
Good deal. Last call for questions. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Member Byron?
Aye.
Member Kate?
Aye.
Member Tooman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Mr. Byron, if you'll present 10.
Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R 2024-124, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, this is the award of a secondary supply contract for debris management services to Crowder Gulf. So this is for the actual removal of debris. We would call them in if our primary was not able to deploy enough resources or we had such a widespread debris removal situation, we needed additional assets. So it's in the estimated amount of $2 million. However, we will not spend a penny of this unless we go into a debris removal process that is reimbursable by FEMA, as long as there's a declared disaster. So we recommend approval of this secondary contract to Crowder Gulf. Thank you.
All right. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Byron?
Aye.
Member Kate?
Aye.
Member Tooman?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Member Chavaria?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. With that, no other business to come in front of council. We will move to adjournment at 10:17.
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Member Coza?